zoning board of adjustment meeting Monday, May 8th, 2017. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be opened. Addict notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 10th, 2017, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Star Ledger and the Tri-Town News. Second, on January 10th, 2017, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on January 10th, 2017, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits which are on your right at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77.
Thank you, Ali. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, you may. Mr. Armata.
Present.
Mr. Cardilicchio.
Here.
Mr. Mertens.
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Here.
Mr. Posh.
Here.
Mr. San Clemente.
Here.
Mr. Turk.
Here.
Mr. Bloom.
Here.
Chairman Nansen.
Here.
You have a call.
Thank you. Can we all stand for the pledge allegiance?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the midst of all difficulties.
Mr., would you mind swearing in in professional service?
Do you swear or affirm the testimony of this board as the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Approval of minutes, regular meeting, March 27th, 2017. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Merton.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Mr. Cardilicchio. Can we have a roll call, please?
Can he second?
Oh, eligible voters.
He can't second.
I wasn't here.
No.
No, not from March 27th.
Oh, I'm sorry, I wasn't. I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. O'Donnell. We have a roll call, please.
Yes. Mr. Armata.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente.
Yes.
Mr. Turk.
Yes.
Mr. Bloom.
Yes.
Chairman Nansen.
Yes. Regular meeting, April 24th, 2017. Eligible voters: Armata, Cardilicchio, Mertens, O'Donnell, Posh, San Clemente, Turk, Bloom, and Nansen. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell.
A second.
Second by Mr. San Clemente. We have a roll call, please.
You may. Mr. Armata.
Yes.
Mr. Cardilicchio.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mr. Posh.
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente.
Yes.
Chairman Nansen.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Vouchers.
No vouchers.
Correspondents.
Yes, we have a letter from Todd Cohen. He is the attorney for SMC Properties LLC. He asked that this matter be carried. It's on tonight's agenda. He would like it carried without further notice to the public for the zoning board meeting of June 12th, 2017. His engineers in the process of submitting revised plans, but he wouldn't have meant in time for this evening. He also gave an extension to time for the board through June 30th, 2017.
Okay. Okay, anyone here for case number BA 16-10, SMC Properties LLC? Seeing that this case will be carried to June 12th, 2017 with further, no further notice.
And that's all the correspondence I have.
Resolutions, case number BA 17-03. Hala Millet.
Malad.
Malad. I had problems the last time with that. Resolution granting side yard setback variance. Eligible voters: Armata, Cardilicchio, Mertens, O'Donnell, Posh, San Clemente, Nansen. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mr. San Clemente, seconded by Mr. Armata. Can we have a roll call?
Mr. Armata.
Yes.
Mr. Cardilicchio.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mr. Posh.
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente.
Yes.
Chairman Nansen.
Yes.
Resolutions memorialized.
Thank you. Next resolution, case number BA 1608 SP, John Blewett Inc., resolution granting minor site plan. Eligible voters: Armata, Cardilicchio, Mertens, O'Donnell, Posh, San Clemente, Nansen. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Mr. Armata, seconded by Mr. Cardilicchio. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Armata.
Yes.
Mr. Cardilicchio.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mr. Posh.
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente.
Yes.
Chairman Nansen.
Yes.
Resolutions memorialized.
Thank you. Okay, case matter at hand. Case number BA 17-05, Mark Parisi, appeal of zoning officer's decision. Application of Mark Parisi as applicant and Mark and Sandra Parisi as owner seeking an appeal of zoning officer's decision regarding noise complaint from the applicant with regards to the escape movie theater on applicant's premises known as Block 25, Lot 7409, Two Castle Court. Expiration date, July 14th, 2017.
Good evening, Mr. Nansen, members of the board. My name is Gordon Gemma. I'm the attorney for the applicant, Mr. Mark Parisi. And Mr. and Mrs. Parisi, the owner of Two Castle Court. Before I begin, I'd like to confirm this efficiency of notice and that the board has jurisdiction to hear this matter, given it's an appeal of a zoning officer's decision that was, and this appeal was made within 20 days of the decision being rendered.
Mr. Gemma, just for purposes of the record, the, um, the appeal concerns the February 28th, 2017 letter by the, uh, by Mr. Howard?
That is correct. That is identified as Exhibit A4.
Right, okay. Um, Mr. Chair, I do find that the board has jurisdiction to consider the matter. But, uh, Mr. Gemma, just before you continue, I just want to just orient the board before, before we move on. I know some of the board members have sat for Section 78 appeals. Some of you may, may not have. I just want to briefly go over what we're, what we're here for tonight. Unlike, uh, zoning boards do multiple things. You hear use variances, bulk variances, site plans, subdivisions, but amongst the other powers that the zoning board has under Section 78, the municipal land use law, is to hear appeals from your zoning officer in the interpretation and enforcement of zoning ordinances. Uh, conditions of approval are considered the same as zoning ordinances and are to be enforced by the, by the zoning officers. So what you have tonight and what Mr. Gemma will go through is an appeal from a decision that Mr. Howard made with regard to this application. This requires just a simple majority vote. It is not a five-vote majority necessary, and I see we have our full complement here. So our seven regular members will be voting, but all nine of you certainly have the right to participate and, and ask questions. Okay, Mr. Gemma?
Thank you. Uh, tonight, we're here to appeal the decision as indicated by, um, Mr. Cuchero of, of your zoning land use director set forth in A4, and that's his letter, February 28th, 2017. And specifically, we're here appealing the position that the noise complaint from my client is, quote, "not an enforceable code issue." And as this board recollects, we previously provided testimony regarding this noise complaint before this board when we objected to application number BA 08-06 SP A3, when we were here on November 28th, 2016, and again on December 16th, 2016. And in connection with that application, a resolution of approval was adopted on February 13th, 2017, which is identified as A6, and this resolution states, quote, "An applicant, an applicant is bound by all representations," and that violations of prior approvals are, quote, "fundamentally about compliance," end quote. The resolution goes on to say, your resolution, in item number nine, quote, "This approval flows from the original grant of bifurcated use variance relief. The grant of amended and preliminary final site plan approval relies upon the satisfaction of all conditions contained in that use variance approval as well as subsequent site plan approvals. This was critical in the board's analysis of the negative criteria in the site plan application. Compliance therefore be considered in the issuance of any building permits pursuant to the requirements of Uniform Construction Code. That all prior approvals be granted in a condition satisfied before permits be issued." Period, end quote. That's your resolution you adopted in February. It remains our position as it did in November, as it does today, as did with my client first once in front of this board in April of 2015, that if there is noise coming from that theater, then the applicant is not in compliance with the representations that it made and you relied upon on April 15th, 2015, and April 27th, 2015, when variances and waivers were approved for the escape theater. During those hearings, the applicant made representations, including guarantees, no noise will be heard at the property, my client's property. Thus, we are appealing the decision by the land use director indicating that he could not, in fact, enforce a compliance provision. And I wanted to be clear that Mr. Matthews has taken the position, it's his role to enforce the ordinances, and he's right. It is his role to enforce the ordinances, but it's also his role to enforce the conditions of approval that you, this board, have placed upon an applicant. And if you don't enforce the conditions of approval and claim, "I have no ability to do that," then in fact, any representation an applicant makes to you, any condition you impose upon an applicant seems to be a requirement without any teeth, without any merit. So it's incumbent upon this board to, to instruct the land use director to say, "Look, it's your job." Because if it's not his job, then whose? The only person that the public can rely upon is you to condition an approval, you to make findings of fact. You've in fact done that. But the enforcement agency is your zoning official who, when an applicant makes a building permit, the applicant first goes to the zoning official who says, "Yes, they comply." Well, no, they don't. And if they don't comply, they have to. And that's all we're really asking you tonight to consider. How do you enforce those conditions that you've required as, in order to give approval to an applicant? And that's simply the really the reason. What I'd like to do, uh, by the way, there's one easy way to do this, and the applicant did it, and that's simply turn down the volume. Mr. Parisi will testify that when this first happened, they in fact did that, and then magically the noise went away. But they found out, as Mr. Parisi will testify, that it didn't appease the patrons of the theater who wanted the full theater experience. They turned it back up again. So basically, they made the decision, "I'd rather not be in compliance as long as I can make money out of selling tickets to a theater. I think it's incumbent upon you to tell them, 'I don't care what it takes to be in compliance.' You've made a representation, I've relied upon the representation, the boards relied upon it, the public relied upon it. Do it, and you have the means and the ability to do so." What I'd like to do is I'd like to bring Mr. Parisi back in front of this board, and rather than reiterate what he testified previously, just make the record so it's clear as to what took place, what he relied upon, and how I'd like to proceed. If I could, please?
Hey, Mr. Parisi, do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give this board as the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
Mark Parisi, M-A-R-C, Parisi, P-A-R-I-S-I.
And your address?
Two Castle Court, Howell, New Jersey, 07731.
Mark?
You can sit at the table there.
Good. Is there a, is speaking?
There's a mic right there in the middle.
That's the mic, okay. You can speak.
All right.
Sure. And just for the record, Mark, as the board knows, you attended the hearings of November 28th, 2016, and again on December 18th, 2016, in connection with the application for the restaurant site, correct?
Yes, I believe it was December 19th, 2016.
Okay. And this resulted in the resolution of memorialization dated February 13th, which I just read, and that is in fact marked for the record as A6. Is that correct?
Correct.
And rather than ask you to repeat what you testified for the record, I would just ask you to summarize, as best you can, your prior testimony, starting with how long you've lived at the property, the approvals for the theater in April of 2015, when you first heard the noise coming from the theater, what you did, how the representatives from the theater responded, and it's one thing, Mark, and I'm going to interrupt him as he speaks sometimes, hopefully not much, uh, just to introduce on the record some additional testimony, just so we can build, we can maintain the record, if you don't mind. So, Mark, if you could, when did you buy the property, and just go from there?
September 2014, we purchased the home.
And since that time, you've lived in the house as a sole residence for yourself and your family?
Yes.
And you're, and if you could, it's your wife, you have children, you have...
Yeah, my wife Sandra, who's with me tonight, and our two children, and my mother and father-in-law. Look at us.
They all live with you in the same house?
Yes.
And this is your only residence, is that correct?
Correct.
And how far away is the house from the theater?
Uh, it's 191 feet from the back wall of the theater to my property line, then maybe approximately another 100 feet to the home itself.
Okay, and, uh, was the theater built when you bought the house?
No.
Okay, and you received notice from the town about the theater being, uh, going for an application in front of this board, is that correct?
Yes, in March of 2015, I received notice.
And did you attend the hearings of April 13th and April 27th, 2015, when the theater was discussed?
I did.
And at those meetings, did you have the opportunity to question both the applicant and their acoustical engineer as to the issue of noise which comes from the theater?
Yes.
And if I ask you to do, Mark, is look at what's been identified as, uh, A, A7, which is the resolution granting preliminary, uh, final approval for the theater, and particularly look at page nine, paragraph 11. And at the bottom of page nine, paragraph 11, uh, if you could, please, for the board, just read directly the last sentence of the resolution as to Mr. Dottie's testimony, and by the way, identify Mr. Dottie as for the record.
Mr. Gemma, hold on. Uh, Jack, I'm gonna need you to verify this, because we do not have these documents.
Here on the exhibit list, I can provide a copy for the...
No, I understand, the board does not have a copy.
I have copies, but I'm just trying to, uh, relate.
I have an additional copy for the board, Mr. Nansen.
Okay.
But which document are we referring to, Mr. Gemma?
This is the resolution of, uh, number 15-10.
Okay.
That's one, right. And I've got a copy for the board, in particular, looking at page nine. Thank you.
Oh, no, I was gonna have it signed in.
Like, it is signed in, it's an exhibit.
Okay, it already is?
Yes. Thank you. And, Mr. Parisi, if you could, for the board, read the last sentence of Mr. Dottie's, of the resolution in connection with Mr. Dottie's testimony.
Okay, Mr. Dottie was the acoustical engineer who testified at the hearing on April 27th, 2015, and in the last paragraph of 11, it says, "It was his overall opinion that the expected sound, if any, from the theater operation would be less that the traffic passing by on Route 9."
Now, is that consistent, not only with Mr. Dottie's testimony, but also with the testimony of Mr. Bagwell, who testified on April the 13th?
No, it is not.
Okay, what does Mr. Bagwell say on April the 13th?
Mr. Bagwell, who was the vice president of Escape Theaters, testified before this board that he could guarantee that there would be no noise heard on my property line, because they had done testing at previous sites and there was no noise.
I'm sorry, when was, when was that?
April 13th, 2015.
And that was...
Scott Bagwell, vice president of theater operations for Escape Theaters.
Where can I find that?
That is not contained within the resolution, but it is part of the testimony of the record. You can watch it online on the videos.
And you're, you're testifying, that was your recollection from attending the meeting? In fact, did you question Mr. Bagwell about that?
Yes, I did.
And that's how you recollected, so specifically?
Yes, actually, I, I wrote down verbatim what was written, what he said.
Okay, and it's your testimony, that's what he indicated?
Yes.
Okay. Now, that was in front of the board on April 13th, Mr. Bagwell.
Correct.
That was Mr. Dottie on April, later on, uh, I think it was April 27th, Mr. Dottie. That was finalized in the resolution that this board adopted. Is that the only time representatives from the theater made a representation about noise in front of a board in Howell Township?
No, there was another occasion in which a representative...
Mr. Gemma, Mr. Cuchero, at the board, the board's kind of at a loss without transcripts here.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna address that. I think, once Mr. Gemma's finished, I'm gonna address particularly Mr. Bagwell's, um, statement, but I think we should get all of the statements that you think they're, they are gonna rely upon, and then I'll, I'll address them.
Okay, because we're kind of at a loss there.
No, you're not the only ones.
Okay, well, again, right now, this is, Mr. Parisi is testifying as to his recollection of Mr. Bagwell in front of this board. If this board would like, uh, to, at, when we're all done, and if they require a verbatim transcript of that section of the testimony, then in fact, uh, before they render a decision, we'll, we'll get you one.
Good.
Just so we're clear, but right now, I'm just asking Mr. Parisi to testify as to his recollection as to what took place when he was questioning the witness who was in front of this board in April of 2015.
Okay.
Mr. Parisi, I, you indicated that that's not the only time that representatives from the theater made a representation in front of Howell Township about noise coming from the theater.
Yes, there was one other occasion that I know of.
What is that occasion, and how do you know about it?
I was looking through, and dealing with all this matter, I was looking through prior zoning board and planning board minutes with respects to the escape theater, and I spread that on June, excuse me, July 10th, 2014, when, uh, the, uh, escape theater appeared before the planning board in Howell, that the owner of the movie theater, Mr. Shance Reagans, had testified before the planning board, uh, that, and that was part of the minutes, and I read the minutes regarding that meeting.
Do you have a copy of the minutes?
I do.
Now, was this, was this at this location, at the planning board, or a different location, though?
That was the, when they intended to put the movie theater up on the West Farms location.
Okay, uh, what does this have to do with, with this...
Well, I think the relevance is simply that on more than one occasion, representatives from the theater made representations that the theater, regardless of where it is, would not in fact generate outside noise. We're simply showing that this is not the sole representation from the theater as to the meetings of April 13th and April 27th previously, regardless of where it was, they represented the Howell Township, you're not going to hear noise from this theater. That's the intent of that testimony.
Is there, is there any other statements that you're gonna be relying upon?
Well, right now, I'm just asking, no, not that we are, Mr. Cuchero, but I'm just gonna ask Mr. Parisi, uh, specifically, you indicate you reviewed the minutes of the planning board meeting?
Yes.
And do you have a copy of those minutes?
Yes, they're right here.
And could you indicate where on the minutes, and read that portion of the minutes?
Well, just getting back to the, let's assume that that's what the minutes say.
Okay.
When the resolution from February 13th, 2017, was setting the fear of mosque case to say that any representations you make in a hearing, whether they show up as a specific condition or not, you're bound by, that case doesn't say that a different application on a different piece of property, the representations made there somehow migrate over to a new application on a new piece of property.
That is correct. However, I'm not asking the board to look at it, say, "You must impose those representations." I'm asking that, uh, given a moment, is to go to the understanding of Mr. Parisi as to what the representations are.
Well, but that's not the standard of review here, the, the understanding of your client. The standard is, what's, what is the requirement, and has the requirement been violated?
Then I'll, we'll strike that as irrelevant, we'll go on.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Parisi, when you were in front of the board on April 13th and April 27th of 2015, and you heard the statements made by Mr. Bagwell and Mr. Dottie, did you rely upon those statements as a representation that you would not have any noise coming from the theater that would impact your family?
Yes.
And in fact, to the best of your knowledge and belief, do you believe that the board relied upon those statements?
Yes.
Okay. Now, if you could, that was April of 2015, and then go forward, what happened next?
Well, they broke ground on the movie theater at a, from what I remember, maybe August or September of 2015. They completed construction on it in, in April, and the movie theater had a soft opening the last weekend of April, and it was, uh, soon thereafter that we started hearing a rumbling sound coming from the back of the theater. And at first, we just didn't even understand what it was, but it didn't take us long to realize that this is sound coming from the theater. So, and, um, the very beginning of May, I had called, uh, Mr. Sonnenblick, Jerry Sonnenblick, the attorney for the developer who had appeared before this board in April of 2015, and I called him up, and I said, uh, you know, "We can hear the rumbling noise in the theater, uh, you know, is there something that can be done about this?" He said that he was unaware that the theater had opened, and he advised that I contact, um, a management for Escape Theaters, and bring it to their attention that they may not be aware that there's even the noises coming across our property line.
So did you in fact do that?
I did.
And who did you contact?
I, uh, sent an email to, uh, Jack Mandelbaum, who had appeared before this board, uh, on behalf, I believe, of AM Mill, the applicant, and, um, he forwarded my email to, uh, to, Mr. Bagwell from Escape Theaters, and also CC'd, I believe, Abe Tress, who is, uh, one of the partners from Sun Equity Capital. So he kind of got sent out to everybody to let them know that there was an, an issue with the noise over at our property.
And were these some of the emails that we presented in front of this board back in November and December of last year?
Yes.
Right. So just quickly, there's one in particular, Mr. Parisi, I wanted just for the record, but just if you could summarize what the colloquy was back and forth, and then let's go to this one in particular. What was the colloquy back and forth? What happened as a function of your sending emails?
We don't have any of these emails marked or anything, I mean, we don't...
But I'm only gonna mark one, that's, but I was just asking to summarize these conversations with the theater, rather than go through the litany what we had the last time. If you'd like to, I can go through all the emails, but I'd rather not do that here.
Well, actually, to be honest, what I, what I thought you guys were gonna do was point to the resolution and say, "This is the requirement in the resolution, and this is how it's not being satisfied."
And we're gonna...
So, you know, really, you know, Mr. Parisi's perceptions or what he relied upon are not really relevant to what is in the plain language of the resolution.
Well, again, if, if you give me the opportunity, Mr. Cuchero, we're gonna get to that, as to exactly how the resolution is not being complied with, but I'd like to provide the litany so this board understands what took place, what he tried to do, how it was addressed.
Well, just, what is the relevance of the effort on either side as to whether the condition has been satisfied? Whether it was good faith, bad faith, there's a requirement?
Right, there's a requirement. The, the relevance is this, so this board confession of remedy and understands, there's a simple remedy, the applicant did it once before, they turned down the volume, and so that's all we're asking the applicant to do today, to comply with the resolution. I'd like to get a...
And I hear talking to the applicant, you're challenging...
We're, we're challenging the zoning officer. That's correct, in terms of the compliance with the resolution, going back to compliance. But in order to show lack of compliance, we've gotta go through this history.
I don't, I don't, I mean-
I, I, I'm gonna interrupt here.
Now, I also just add, you're throwing a lot of information at the board with no papers back and forth.
It's hearsay, too, you know.
It's very difficult to follow, you know, he said this to me, these emails go back and forth, but they have nothing.
I, I understand that, Jennifer.
All of that should have been provided with the application.
Jennifer, we, we did that before, I certainly can provide it, but I'm trying to short-circuit all of that, but it may not be as relevant. The key component I just want to get to is, the applicant was on notice, the applicant complied for a while, and they didn't comply, we can show it, and then get to the heart of the issue of compliance with the resolution.
But I, I wanna back up. I, I know you went to Mr. Dottie in, in the resolution, number eleven, if you read the whole thing as far as acoustical, Mr. Dottie, the, an acoustical engineer, also testified at the hearing. He indicated that the walls of the proposed theater would be approximately ten point five inches thick, and designed to reduce any sound from the theater. Based upon his studies at similar theaters located in Brick Township, he noted that eighty feet from the theater during the showing of a film, the sound level was at forty-five dB eight. And not at all, not off coming from the theater. He indicated that a fifty dB eight is in the night, is the nighttime from ten P.M. to five A.M. maximum, and sixty-five dB eight at daytime maximum for readings at the property line in occupied area. In this application, the building is approximately a hundred and ninety feet away from the property line. It was his overall opinion that the expected sound, if any, from the theater operation would be less than the traffic passing by on Route nine. That was his testimony. Do you have professional testimony matching those dB eight?
No.
This in the record, though?
In fact, we're, what we're going to go to is that the problem with this type of sound, as we'll get to, is not one measurable by dB eight. And now, and we'll get to the last sentence where he says, the theater, if any, would be less than the traffic passing by on Route nine, so-
Mr. Gemma?
We, we have a guidance, did we have to follow?
No, I understand, I understand, you-
It's dB eights, you know.
And that's, that is the concern the applicant has, and as articulated, that in fact, the sound that he hears, the sound that's emanating from the theater, is not measurable by dB eight, it's the low bass frequency sound.
So, can we, can we, but that's how we measure it, Gordon.
I know, but that's how you measure-
Well, can we, can we just cut, everybody, can we just come back for a moment, because I think I'm still trying to grasp for what I thought should have been our opening here. So, Mr. Gemma, you're saying that the standard that's articulated in the resolution is what Chairman read, sort of at the last paragraph, that it was his overall opinion that the expected sound, if any, from the theater operation would be less than the traffic passing by on Route nine?
That is correct.
You're saying that is not what is happening now?
That is not what is happening, Mr. Parisi, the sound that's coming-
All right, so, let's just stay there for a moment, but I also just wanna comment on the relevance of the, of, of some of what Mr. Parisi has stated. First, references to Mr. Bagwell from the hearing, I mean, you have the burden of proof, and Mr. Parisi has the burden of proof, so anything that we were, that we would've needed to rely upon should've, should've been provided. But since you agree that it's this statement in the resolution that's the standard, I don't think what Mr. Bagwell said, since we don't have it, and you're agreeing that this is the standard-
Respectfully, respectfully, Mr. Kachara, respectfully, what I'm saying, Mr. Parisi-
No one ever looks at me and says disrespectfully.
I know, disrespectfully, you're better off. But the point is, Mr. Parisi has testified that that's what he heard, that's what he took down. You're correct, I don't have a verbatim transcript, but so far, there has not been any, as we'd say, scintilla of evidence indicate, his testimony is not credible, is not accurate, and doesn't properly describe what took place and this board relied upon. In fact, members of this board, at the last hearing we were at, articulated that that was what they recollected as well. So, I understand, I don't have a transcript, Mr. Parisi has not gone through the proof at the expense of getting one yet, however, until he can be-
What do you mean, yet?
He might at some point wish to supplement the record and provide it if this board wanted it, however-
But if this is the standard, if we all agree that this is the standard in the resolution, why do we need to talk about Mr. Bagwell?
Because that goes to the heart of what the, how to interpret what that standard is, and what this board relied upon.
I took a video of the-
Okay, right. I think this board recollects what was said in front of it, and so far, unless someone can, can begin to cross and question the credibility or the accuracy of a statement, it's a statement on the record made by someone who heard the statement made. I'll be in a serious say, but you and I both know, in the planning board, on the zoning board, the strict rules of evidence don't apply, particularly-
Well, there's some formality to it, though, it's not a free-for-all.
It's not a free-for-all, and if it was made outside the context of this board, and made outside the context of what this board articulated at the last meeting in December and November that they heard, you may be right. But I think it's not a free-for-all, I'm just asking you to accept these statements by Mr. Parisi for the accuracy as they are presented.
I know, but hey, I want you to understand, the board is bound by, by, what our professionals provide us is current limits as far as sound, what, what's out there. That's, that's all we have, that we can rely on.
Mr. Nansen, that if this was simply a function of do you or do you not violate the ordinance, we're not saying that the sound violates the ordinance in fact.
I understand what your argument is, your argument is that the, the statement in the resolution carries the same import as an ordinance.
That's correct.
But I think, getting back to where you were a moment ago, 'cause I think, you know, this is the heart of the matter, so if we all agree that this is what you're saying has not been satisfied, you were saying before that the, the sound can't be measured with dB eight?
I'm saying this type of sound-
Well, what is this type of sound?
The, and rather than have me describe it, Mr. Parisi, if you could, once again, for the board, describe the sound, and in particular, describe the issue of when you sought to have it measured by both the Monmouth County Board of Health, if I could, so we can get to the heart of it.
No, I, I understand, but I wanna make sure that we're all moving in the right direction, when we're saying the type of, I mean, this is a very technical argument, that sound can't be measured.
Well, if I could, could I ask Mr. Parisi to, one, describe the sound, and, two, to describe what took place when he made a complaint with the Monmouth County Board of Health, and he made a complaint to the town about the ordinance? So, if you just let him describe it, it may provide some clarity for the board to make a determination as to how best they wish or not wish to proceed.
You can proceed.
Thank you. Mr. Parisi, if you could describe the sound that emanates from the theater, from when it began and what continues through today?
It's a rumbling bass noise, the best analogy I could draw is like a thunderstorm that's five miles away where you can hear the thunder, the rumbling of the thunder in the distance. The noise travels across my property line and into my home. I could never hear no, traffic from the, noise from the traffic on Route nine inside my home. I can hear noise from the movie theater inside my home, that, that, those bass waves go right through my home and into my bedroom. I lay in bed at night and hear a rumbling sound that sounds like there is a thunderstorm in Jackson. It, it, it's unbelievable, I, I can't even believe that it's happening the way that it is.
And this is, this is repeated every night?
Every night, every, every day since the movie theater's been open, we hear a rumbling sound, and my neighbors, who are also here, they hear the same noise. I mean, we can hear it, like, all of my side of Castle Court, it, it, it's an unmistakable rumbling sound from the movie theater, and they testified that there would be no noise heard on our property. I mean, I, I, I'm, it's absurd that I have to be here to, to, to address this issue.
Can I just ask a question then, Mr. Parisi? Is it what you're feeling or what you're hearing?
I'm hearing it.
You're hearing it?
Oh, you can hear it.
And you're feeling it also?
It's, yeah, it's like a vibration, I, I'm not an expert, so I'm not gonna testify as though I'm an expert, but I, I believe the sound is probably traveling through the ground as well.
Right.
And didn't, didn't you ask, and I'm just remembering now from our last meeting, that didn't you ask the theater to do something like, put up a wall, or did they, were they going to address the frequency? 'Cause the, the reason why you can't measure it, the dB eight, is because it's a frequency.
It's, yeah, it's-
So, were they going to put up a wall of some kind, or even put it in the ground, if I'm remembering right?
No, I don't, I don't remember any discussion about a wall. What I do remember is that, and I previously testified to this, is that in June of two thousand and sixteen, after I had sent out the email, I, I said, I think you guys really need to come to my property to hear this for yourself. So, on June sixteenth, two thousand and sixteen, two representatives from Sun Equity Partners, Jack Mandelbaum, and Stephen Pinter, and Scott Bagwell, who came from, I don't know, Indiana or Tennessee, wherever he lives. The three of them came to my property, they played a test track inside the movie theater that was on a loop, a five-minute loop, so that they could hear all the different kinds and sounds that, from the test track. And we could, every, all of us could hear the rumbling sound from the theater on my property line, we were on my property, and then I said, come inside my home, they came inside, came inside my bedroom, you could hear the rumbling through the wall, and they all looked at each other, they said, so what are we gonna do about this, guys? I mean, this is crazy. And they said, we're gonna hire a sound engineer to make recommendations on what we can do to fix this problem. And I said, I would appreciate that, how much time are we talking about now? They said, three to six weeks, and I said, okay. So, that was in the middle of June. By July, I have emails, again, I don't know if I can put these on the record, but we were emailing back and forth about what steps were being taken to try to abate this noise, to fix this noise. They said they were gonna, again, I don't wanna get into hearsay, they said, okay, but they said that they were, they were still waiting for material, they had bought materials, and they needed time to install the materials, and I told them, you know, like, look, I'm losing my patience, I go outside to barbecue and go in my pool, and we hear rumbling sounds on my property, I mean, it's a real nuisance. And, and then finally, on August, nothing had been done by August, so when I got, received a notice regarding the Texas Roadhouse Grill, that they were appearing here on August eighth, I came to this meeting, and I spoke with Mr. Sonnenblick and Mr. Abe Tress outside in the hallway, and I said, guys, what are we doing to fix this noise? It's now been almost three months, you know? And they said, look, we really don't know, you know, what we can do to fix it, and then, you know, and, look, I don't wanna get into conversations that are not appropriate for this board, but there was conversations about them wanting to offer me some type of compensation because-
Yeah, we, let's, let's draw it right there.
Right.
Just one more question, when the theater came out to your house to do the test, did they provide you any results from their test?
No, because at that time-
They just felt, they just heard it and felt it and said, yeah, there's an issue.
Yeah, they were just there to validate my complaint, yeah.
All right.
But I don't know if they in fact did hire a sound professional or not, and if, and what the results of that, you know, you know, inquiry was, you know, I, I, I simply don't know. And they said they had bought materials and installed them, but there's been no reduction in the noise nuisance since last summer, and then ever since we had, you know, that discussion here on August eighth, it's been kind of, there's been no communication regarding fixing the problem. I mean, we were here in December, and it was my understanding that based upon all the statements that were made by the board members on December nineteenth, that you were strongly encouraging the applicant in the movie theater to do something to fix the noise, it's now May, and nothing's been done.
Well, but that's, that's all irrelevant. What, the only thing that is relevant for us is, what is the standard, and was the zoning officer's decision regarding that standard correct or incorrect? So, all of this is really, doesn't factor in to, to that core question, the exclusive question.
Mr. Kachara, backing up to that, I also advised Mr. Gemma and your applicant that you might have to take other remedies other than here at the zoning board, because at the Texas Roadhouse, it actually was not the theater application, you know, we, there was, we were kinda bound by dealing with, with the Roadhouse, because it was a separate application.
And we understand that, Mr. Nansen.
And, you know, at this point, you know, I, I also remember testimony put on the record that Monmouth County did come out, they did do the, the appropriate building code, you know, according to the code and everything, what the allowed dB eights were, and at that point, you know, they came back, and it was well within the limits of the dB eights. Understood that this might be a different, you know, deal, but we don't have a guideline on that.
Well, let me, let me, if I can, Mr. Nansen, provide a few things towards that, and you're correct. My client testified that he did in fact try to bring out Monmouth County, and we'll get there. And you're right, this is not a code issue, we never said it was, this is a compliance with the resolution issue. And what we're seeking is not, the applicant didn't say, and you didn't put down, you shall strictly comply just with the code, that's not what it says here. What you said, what the applicant indicated, and what this board and my client relied upon is, the noise from the theater is not going to be anything worse than coming from Route nine.
Well, I think, Mr. Gemma, that's, and that's in the resolution, I agree that that's the standard.
Right.
But what I'm telling you is, emails back and forth, meetings in the kitchen, you know, things like this are of no consequence to whether this standard is, is being complied with.
My client was testifying in response to a question-
I know, I, I understand.
So, give him the latitude to answer the question.
I understand.
And let's get to the heart of that, because you bring up a good point, Mr. Nansen, and I wanna show that my client tried to find a standard. Did you in fact go to the Monmouth County Board of Health, and what happened?
Yeah, I spoke with, I think, believe her name was Ellen Kane, in the middle of May, and we set up a date for when she could come to my property, because the weather had, conditions had to be just right in order for them to do a, an appropriate measurement. She came to my property on May twenty-fifth, two thousand and sixteen, and at that particular time, the movie theater had only been open for a few weeks, and I had not started to develop a pattern of what movies were loudest and when. I mean, every, every movie has different, a different audio track, and some movies are louder than others. So, in May of two thousand and fifteen, sixteen, I don't even recall what movie was playing at that time, and when she came to my home at ten o'clock at night, she had her sound meter, she measured, and she told me that she wasn't registering anything on the dB eight. Like I said, it's a rumbling bass noise, and she told, and I described the noise to her, and she said, well, a, a rumbling bass noise is not gonna be able to be measured on a dB eight frequency, because that, the sound meter isn't designed for that. She tried measuring it with DBC, which is what that kind of noise is, and this is just basically what, what she explained to me about noise. And she said that since it's not a pure steady tone, which is like a continuous rumbling noise, like, the, the rumbling noise obviously is like intermittent and variable, it varies per movie, I mean, it's not one constant rumbling noise that doesn't end, there are breaks in it, like, in a movie. So, she said, whatever rumbling noise you're hearing, I can't, I can't measure it, because it's not a continuous pure steady tone, which is indicated in the report that has been provided to the board and to Mr. Howard. So, it, it just may have been that she came at the wrong time, because there, maybe there wasn't any movie playing, or the movie wasn't rumbling at that time. I explained to her that I was gonna be addressing this matter with theater personnel and with the developers, and she encouraged me to pursue this through the, you know, through those channels, that, based on her measurings, that she didn't find that there was a noise ordinance violation, but whatever noise there was, if they had testified that there's, there would be no noise, then that's something that needed to be handled at the municipal level or with, you know, theater management.
See, I, I don't think, hey, I, I'm gonna go back to the resolution. It was his opinion, they, they didn't testify that there wouldn't be any noise. I, I can verify that, because I sat through all the meetings. They never testified that there wouldn't be any noise. They testified that it would be as such a noise, you know, that, that it would be in compliance with, with the-
Mr. Chairman, I respectfully disagree with you, because I watched the video from the April thirteenth, two thousand and seventeen meeting, and I videoed it on my phone, and I could play that, but I don't know if that's admissible.
We need to have transcripts of that, you know, if we had it. I'm going by what the resolution, I, you know, I was here during most of those meetings. I, I under, I know what they were talking about when they said, but in the resolution, it was his opinion, you know, you, you read it yourself here, it was his opinion that he expected the sound, if any, if any, that means he's not saying that there won't be.
Right.
He said, if any, would be comparing to the traffic on Route nine. And, you know, I know, I've been there, before the theater was built, you know, when, when B. James was being built, you can hear Route nine traffic during the day, during the night, it's not so bad, but, you know, I, I do understand what he's saying, but he's saying that you're not, you know, he's not, and I don't think any one of them said that you're not gonna hear noise.
Well, respectfully, the testimony is from Mr. Bagwell in front of this board, and again, if the transcript is needed, on top of Mr. Parisi's testimony, we'll provide it, but Mr. Bagwell said, there will not be any noise.
Well, but the expert-
Mr. Dottie, Mr. Dottie said, what he said is that, if any, meaning if any comes at all, it would be less than the traffic passing by on Route nine. That was the standard that we're saying is being violated.
Well, then, why do we keep referring back to no noise then? 'Cause that's not what this paragraph says.
And I understand that, but that, but-
Well, I think it clouds the issue, and it creates a standard for us that, that is not the case.
But, but-
I asked you before, I said, is this the standard?
Yes, that is the standard.
So, I say again, what does it matter what Mr. Bagwell said? If we all agree that this is the statement, and we're trying to review whether this statement has been complied with or not, what does it matter what Mr. Bagwell said?
He goes and provides context to that statement.
What context? Is it plain language here?
The context is when you, as you and I both know, Mr. Kachara, when you draft a resolution, you don't draft everything said in front of the board, so you drafted in the context of all the statements made in front of the board, this is part of the overall context. To not include Mr. Bagwell's statements, in my opinion, would be to indicate that, that is somewhat misleading to the board, the board has to recollect.
The expert who testified, as reflected in the resolution, as agreed to by you, said that, you know, the theater operations would be less than the traffic passing on Route nine.
And in trying to address-
Well, here's, here's, I, well, here's what I don't understand. Well, here's, here's, I, well, here's what I don't understand. There is a standard. Where, why do we need to talk an hour about people's testimony when there's a standard that you agree is in the resolution?
The testimony we had, we just, we've mentioned, Mr. Bagwell, I concede we did. You want to strike that reference, we'll strike it.
I'm not striking, I'm not suggesting anything. I'm talking about what I think is legally relevant.
From the chair about complying with the ordinance and about the issues of decimal levels.
The chair just read that same statement from, from the end. I think what we're, we're sitting here talking about something that we've now agreed upon like 20 times.
Okay. And I just want to go with you, what happened with the Board of Health, and I'd like to now, if I could, just ask what happened vis-à-vis when Mr. Parisi spoke to the zoning official, just so we can complete the testimony, what took place. Mr. Parisi, when this all took place, after you went to the Board of Health, after the resolution, which is identified as A6 was adopted, did you in fact go to the zoning official, which is the basis of this appeal?
Yes.
What did you do, and what took place?
Well, I went to the zoning official twice, once in September, excuse me, to make a complaint, and there was a.
And just for purposes of the record, you mean Mr. Howard?
No, initially, I went and filed a noise complaint with, I think her name was Betty Lou Rector?
Betty Textor.
Textor, Betty, okay. And that was in September of 2016. I spoke with her and Alex Burz, an a code enforcement officer. A complaint was made. I explained everything to them. I showed them all the documents, the emails, the resolution, and they ultimately rescinded that complaint.
First, one thing at a time.
Okay.
Did they issue a letter dated September 23rd, 2016, where in fact, they did find that, in fact, that the theater was carrying, the noise from the theater was carrying beyond the adjoining property lines?
Yes, this is the.
And that is dated, what, what date is that?
September 23rd, 2016.
And if I could, just for the record, I'd like to mark that, please. I think we're up to on the exhibit list, A9?
A9.
Thank you. And was, what happened?
Yeah, this was, this was rescinded? Yeah, I didn't hear that it was rescinded until I met with Mr. Howard in February of 2017.
You know, why it was rescinded?
He told me that they had obtained a copy of the Department of Health's noise violation, or the fact that there was no noise violation, and as a result of that document, they rescinded that violation notice.
Then, and after the resolution of February was done this year, did you go back to the zoning, the zoning officials?
I did. I obtained a copy of the resolution. I spoke with Mr. Howard and Mr. Alex Burz.
Okay, and what happened then?
I went through everything. I explained to them the history of what had been going on. I pointed out in the current resolution, you know, about an applicant's bound by all representations, you know, and asked, I invited him to come to my property and say, you can come here for yourself, the noise rumbling on my property. I even told him that at that particular time, the movie called The Great Wall was playing, and that if, you know, every, every time the movie plays, an hour and 26 minutes into the movie, approximately, you hear a rumbling sound. So, I even gave him guidance as to actually at what points of the movie is it the loudest, so he wouldn't be out there waiting for two hours to hear noise. He could go there at a particular time during the movie to hear it for himself. And then I didn't hear back from him. I'm unaware if he actually ever did come to my property to hear the noise.
So, did he ever go into your house?
No.
And you don't know whether he ever, and if he even went to your property, is that correct?
I, I'm unaware.
And then ultimately, the letter was issued, which we're appealing from, that is a letter dated February 28th, 2017.
Correct.
And it's your understanding that I said forth in the letter, he issued it because it does not violate an ordinance, is that correct?
Correct.
Just so we're clear, the sound that's coming from the theater, it wouldn't bother the ordinance anyway because it doesn't get registered in decibels, is that correct, pursuant to the Health Department?
Yeah, I believe the sound is a DBC sound, but the ordinance is measured in DBA.
Okay. And so, just to be clear, does the sound continue to emanate from the theater?
Yes.
Is the sound from the theater different, and is the sound greater than the sound coming from Route 9?
Yes, it's louder than the cars on Route 9.
I have no further questions.
Just a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you, I mean, I understand that this noise is not a DBA scale noise, but do you have anything that demonstrates that it is louder than the traffic on Route 9, other than, because like what I see is the Monmouth County complaint would show that nothing, nothing registered, but I don't see anything that shows that the noise at your house is not quieter than Route 9. I, I don't have any of that information.
Well, I mean, I guess if you were to.
I'm going to cut to the chase. Have you hired an expert to measure these sound waves?
No.
Okay. That's.
Mr. Parisi, did you in fact make a noise complaint to the Howell Township Police Department on February 22nd, 2017?
Yes, I did.
In fact, did that result in a report being issued by the Howell Township Police Department?
Yes.
If you could, Mr. Parisi, I'd ask you to, in fact, I have this report marked as A10, and if I can ask you to please read the highlighted portion of A10.
While speaking with Mr. Parisi outside his residence, I heard sounds of the bass from the theater. At this point, Mr. Parisi was advised of the complaint process.
So, this is from a police officer of Howell Township, is that correct?
Yes.
In fact, heard the rumbling sounds and testified in front of this board?
Yes.
And that's, that's, the rumbling sounds are different and distinct from the sounds coming from Route 9?
Yes.
Are you saying it says that in the report, that it's different than the?
No, I'm asking, it doesn't say on the report. Mr. Parisi, you read the report verbatim, but I'm asking him to testify that that is in fact different.
But the officer didn't put anything in there that it was different than the sound?
Just read again exactly what the officer wrote, so we're clear for the record.
The officer wrote, quote, "While speaking with Mr. Parisi outside his residence, I heard sounds of the bass from the theater. At this point, Parisi was advised of the complaint process," close quote.
So, if he's heard sounds, the bass from the theater, it's a different sound than the traffic on Route 9?
Oh, yeah.
The officer didn't say that.
No, I'm, I'm asking, I'm asking Mr. Parisi to look at what was written and just comment on. Now, the officer just wrote what the officer wrote, but I'm asking Mr. Parisi, who was there when the officer wrote it, was that sound from the bass theater different than the sound coming from Route 9?
But then, was it the officer that stated it?
I understand that, Mr. Nansen.
I just clarified.
I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to pretend it is, and what I can clearly do is.
Give Mr. Monmouth.
So, what is this being proffered in order to prove with regard to?
This is big process, because in fact, there was a rumbling sound coming from the theater that's different and distinct from the noise on Route 9, and it's not just my client's.
How does it prove that it's different and distinct, though?
Because, because if it were the same sound coming from Route 9, then the police officer wouldn't have written, it's a bass rumbling sound coming from the theater.
He didn't write a bass rumbling sound, he just said he heard the bass.
He heard the bass from the theater. He identifies it coming from the theater.
Well, we don't, that's fine.
Okay, I'm just, it's offered for simply the statement that was made.
I think that's a stretch.
So, well, let's hear all the testimony.
Okay.
But, but I just have a question. Noise is expressed in some manner, whether it's DBA or, or something else. Are you, are you saying that there is no technology that's available that can measure?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm not saying that. What I am saying is, your ordinances and the requirements of the Monmouth County Board of Health are in DBA. So, when someone says, I.
But what I'm asking you is, if it's not DBA, what is it? What do we use?
We, Mr. Parisi indicated it was DBC is what you used to measure low frequency.
Which was used.
I'm sorry, he's saying that was used. What I'm telling, what I'm proffering for this board, and they can take notice of, is their ordinance is written in DBA, which is why you can't look at it to say he's violating an ordinance.
Well, we're not. We're looking at it and even.
As the standard, as drafted on paragraph 11 of the resolution.
I am right, which we've been getting back.
What is the standard for the DBC? Do you have professional?
Mr. Nansen, my position is this. Certainly, we could have, there is no standard. So, it's simply a bass rumbling sound. You don't have a standard. It wasn't testified as the standard.
I understand, but you're asking the board to make a decision. We're, we're guided by our professionals as far as what ordinances and what, we have guidelines that we have to follow. Any other than that has to really be a legal challenge.
Well, the issue is this, Mr. Nansen. You're 100% correct. The guidelines you have to follow are the guidelines you created in your resolution.
We, we, we've agreed with that.
No, well, Mr. Nansen, I think has, Mr. Kachara. I think there's distinction here. Mr. Nansen is saying, what ordinance is to follow, and my point is, there isn't one.
Well, the, the case law is clear, that representations on the record, things that make its way into the resolution are the same as ordinance standards for purposes of enforcement. So, I think it's all the same thing. But what I'm asking you, what I've asked, what I've asked you, and I don't still want to hear an answer, is what is the proper means to, to express or record the, the sound?
The sound, and the proper standard I set forth in the resolution.
Not the standard, but what is the proper method? Like, DBA is not, is not a standard. It's a way of, it's a way of expressing the sound.
What's the acceptable standard? That's what I want to know.
Well, I think there's two different questions here. The standard, that what, the standard, I think Mr. Kachara and I agree, the standard is what you set forth in your resolution. Is it more or less than the sound coming from the traffic of Route 9? That's the standard you created, not, which may sound like an arbitrary standard.
It wasn't, it, it wasn't. If you read this statement, we, we agreed that this was a statement based.
The statement he's talking about.
But it was an overall opinion of an acoustical engineer. It, it, it's not the board's statement. I, I realize it's in there, but, but this was put down, and it was his overall opinion that the expected sound, if any, if any, is the key word, if any, from the theater operation would be less than the traffic passing by on Route 9.
That is.
But it, 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 it doesn't give us a standard to base on.
It does.
It really doesn't, because it's his opinion.
Not, not, Mr. Nansen.
No, it's still a standard.
I understand, but if you read the other portion of the, the, the resolution he's given in DBA levels, and, you know, he, he didn't.
Well, Mr. Gemma, one moment. If I, if I could, Mr. Chairman.
And it was his testimony that it's not going to bother anybody, and those specific words count. But he was here for a specific reason. He's an expert on sound, noise, decibel, DBA, DBC, whatever, and he said, it's not going to bother anybody more than Route 9.
Well, can I just, can I just?
What is the standard?
Can I just comment on that for a moment?
You tell me, what's the standard?
Well, I'm saying, is this guy, is, it's not like my opinion or his opinion. This guy was here as an expert.
I understand.
I think I can maybe bring some, some light to it. So, look, they brought an acoustic expert. The acoustic expert had a job. His job was to address the negative criteria and show that the noise coming from this use, which was not permitted at the time, was not going to substantially detriment the neighborhood. And he did that by making a statement, you know, or make, testifying and then ultimately concluding that the noise from Route 9, or the noise that comes from the theater, to use the words of the resolution, would be less than the traffic passing by on Route 9. So, it leads us to where you are, Mr. Chairman. What does that mean? I would think that what it means is, you take a reading when there's not a movie playing, and you take a reading when there is a movie playing. And if the readings come out higher when the movie's playing, it might show that the, that the statement and the proffer is, is not being satisfied. But what you're telling me is that you can't take that reading using DBA. So, the question is, how do you, how do you express in a compatible manner the noise coming from Route 9 without a movie and the noise coming from Route 9 with the movie? How do you express that in a way that can be evaluated?
And I think you're correct. So, the question becomes, what do I use to measure that? And we could use, the applicant, the, Mr. Parisi could say, I'm going to use DBC. And if this board directs and says.
No, no, you have to tell us.
Mr. Kachara, respectfully, if the board says that's the sole standard, I hope, except, we'll wait, come back and say, here's the differential. But I don't want my client, I don't want my client.
You have the burden of proof.
Mr. Kachara, I don't want my client spending the money and saying, but that's still not a standard.
Well.
Here's another standard. I proffer another standard.
Well, spending no money, what is, what is the technology that one would use to measure?
Here is the technology I would suggest that this board might want to consider, and that is the testimony of the applicant, their ears, the testimony of the neighbors who hear the same thing.
All right, well, then that's.
That when there's enough, when there's enough testimony from enough people saying their hearing sound different than coming from Route 9, I would think that this board might want to take that into consideration rather.
Well, that's fine, but you've now answered what I asked, which was, how do you measure it?
Right.
And the way that you measure it, you're saying, it cannot be measured in any other manner than by what you hear.
No, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that. I am not saying that. And that's putting words, I'm saying there might be a way to measure it using DBC. But I'm saying, rather than forced an applicant to do that, since they've created a subjective standard of less than or greater than the noise from Route 9, the testimony from the applicant, the testimony from the emails from the people in that theater who went to the property, who acknowledged there was noise, are all testamentary and go to the evidentiary burden of whether it's greater or lesser than Route 9. Without forcing my client to go and create another standard of how to measure radio waves, that this board may or may not accept.
No one's forcing anyone to do anything. Your client has filed an appeal. It's, he's making certain arguments that the decision of the zoning officer was incorrect. He has the burden of proof, and I think now we've just made some headway that there's no, there's no meter or, or a test.
No.
That can.
No, the only headway is, we haven't, we have not gone, and we concede we haven't gone and gotten one. Is there one that we could possibly get? I don't know. I'm not a sound engineer. Can you measure it in DBCs?
That's important also.
That I'm not a sound engineer? Yes.
Well, that we, we don't, you don't know because you haven't.
I don't know, right.
You haven't investigated it.
I haven't investigated in that context, but I proffer there's another standard we can use, and that's what you hear, that the neighbors will testify to, Mr. Parisi testified to.
And that's fine. That's, that's what I want to get to, that that's what we're, that's what we're here tonight evaluating. It's not, there's, what they're saying is, DBA cannot properly gauge or measure the sound. There's another test that might, but they haven't investigated it. And this, the, what they're relying upon tonight, and Mr. Gemma can tell me if I'm wrong, relying upon tonight is the personal observations of people in the area that they think when the movie theater is playing, the noise is louder than when the movies are not playing and it's just Route 9.
That's correct. And we also have, just so we're clear, that's also the intent of some of the emails that Mr. Parisi was talking about. Even the theater acknowledged there was noise coming.
Well, I mean, they're not here, they're not testifying.
Actually, those are a missions against interest. I proffer even under the hearsay rule, I can admit them. So, if you want to go strict application of the rules of evidence, as a mission against interest, and this is a.
They also have no ability to, you know, you did not submit them in advance. They had no indication that they would be used tonight. We're not, the board has no ability to cross-examine them. So, I'm not telling the board can't weigh them. I'm saying they can give it its due, its due weight.
If you have due course, I understand. I don't disagree.
Mr. Parisi. Hang on. Mr. Mallon.
Yes.
You've heard the testimony and you've heard what's going on. In an engineering standpoint, what is your recommendation?
Well, first of all, when I, when I read and listen to the testimony, you're taking one paragraph out of how the testimony went. If you read the previous paragraph, the applicant testifies what the daytime standard in decibels is, what the nighttime standards in decibels is. He did not relate to what the movie theater would give out, but he, his comment was, and he didn't make any relationship to the Route 9, what it was in decibels, but he said it would be less than Route 9, is what he said. My knowledge, and we've already come up with it, there's no way to measure what Mr. Gemma is trying to talk about. I know that the standard that we use is what the state standard is, as they mentioned, in decibels, in the sound. The township itself does not have its own ordinances. We rely on the state. In fact, the township doesn't even have its own meter. They use the county, which is pretty standard in most municipalities and most counties. They don't have their own meters to measure the decibels. I read it and listened to the testimony also, that they were referring to decibels. I have never seen anybody measure on a DBC, and I think we've kind of established that. Vibration, it's, he's probably listening to the same thing. You stand outside and you can hear a car with its windows open with the bass all the way up, and you hear it two blocks away, and you know they're coming. But it probably won't measure on a meter. To me, I interpreted that paragraph as measured in decibels, that they would comply with the daytime and nighttime readings, and aren't any. That's how I heard it and how I understood it from an engineering standpoint.
I'd like to speak on this matter just for a moment, if I can. Can I?
Sure.
Okay. I think that for the board members that were here in April of 2015 and heard the testimony of both Mr. Dottie and Mr. Bagwell, I think you will recall that there was a distinction that was made between the two testimonies. Mr. Bagwell, who is the Vice President of Theater Operations and in control of the operations in the theater, and that includes the volume at which they play these movies, he testified very clearly, and if you go back and listen to the record, you. very clearly, and if you go back and listen to the record, you will hear, he guaranteed that there would be no noise heard beyond the theater on my property line. I believe Mr. Armada in December stated on the record that he remembers them making that statement and saying that they are, they should be accountable to that, if I'm correct. For the other members that were here, you may have recalled that as well. When Mr. Dotty testified, he said that it was his overall professional opinion, and then when Mr. Barelli, the board member, pushed him further and said, can you guarantee that there will be no noise heard by the residents, Mr. Dotty sted, and I wrote it down, he says, I do not control the theater, I don't control the shopping center, so I can't guarantee anything, in my professional opinion, based on my forty-four years of experience, what you just said, referring back to what Mr. Barelli had said. So, Mr. Dotty was hedging himself, he didn't want to say that, yes, I can guarantee that they're not going to hear any noise, because he wasn't in control of the theater operations, whereas Mr. Bagwell was, and Mr. Bagwell testified that there would be no noise heard on this, at my property, and that's clear, that's on the record.
I understand, wish we had that record here.
Well, I could play a video of it if you would, but I don't know if that's admissible.
That's not, that's not admissible.
So, just, just to be clear, the noise that you hear, and the frequencies that come out, are greater than, different than that which is coming from Route 9?
You could pull it up online, the video, if you wanted to right now, you could pull it up online and play it, it's on, the video, whoops, sorry Gordon, what was your question?
The noise that you hear, the noise you've heard since the theater opened up and until today, is different, distinct, and louder than that which is coming from Route 9.
Absolutely.
And tonight you have neighbors here that also hear this noise.
Yes.
Could you just go one at a time and ask the neighbors to come up?
Well, wait a second, Mr. Jem.
Rather just go and done quickly, because this question's going to be a simple question, Rob.
Yeah, well, they're going to come up and they're going to get sworn in.
I know that, they're going to come up, get sworn in, but rather than have them, we all, I'll tell you what.
Why don't you ask the question to the first, and then as others are coming up, say same question.
Same question, that's what I'd like to do, I'd like to just do it now, so that way, if there's cross-examination, they can cross.
Are you, are you finished with Mr. Parisi's testimony in totality?
Yes.
Okay.
What I'd like to do is, and then I'll give, obviously, the public and Mr. Sonnenblatt the chance to cross all of them at the same time, but rather.
Well, let's just, if you're done with Mr. Parisi, let's get the residents up, let's get them sworn in.
Do you want to do this under public participation?
No, it's not public participation, these are witnesses.
Okay, he's going to be witness for the.
These are witnesses for the applicant, yeah.
Yeah, the only neighbor I believe here that is Mr. Rich Weinberg. Mr. Weinberg? I mean, my wife could certainly testify, but she.
That's your right, if you'd like.
Right, no, I.
I would never stop my wife from testifying if she wanted to.
You're a smart man. Yes, yes, exactly.
Okay, sir, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I don't.
Okay, you can take a seat, and there's a microphone over there, and if you could just state and spell your name and give us your address, but you can take a seat first.
Mr. Weinberg, if you could just, your name and your address, please.
Full name is Richard W. Weinberg Senior, W E Y N B E R G, 138 Lanesmore Road, Howell, New Jersey.
Mr. Weinberg, just, where is your property in connection with my client's property and the theater?
My property is more than four hundred feet from the theater.
You've heard Mr. Parisi testify about the rumbling, low-frequency sounds he hears from, on his property, what is any sounds do you hear from the theater at your property?
I'm, I'm getting, I'm getting vibrations from the heavy bass when the bass hits, okay? It's a vibration that's felt through the ground, okay? I have a hearing disability to start with, but yet I can hear the noise of the bass, and I'm more than four hundred feet away from the structure, and I sit in a line where I'm in, actually in line more with the highway, clear of the structure itself.
Mr. Weinberg, is the noise from the theater and the vibrations from the theater different and greater from the noise from Route 9?
Yes, the, there's, there's a definite, there's a definite difference between the two, the relationship is that while you hear the noise in my house from Route 9, of the heavy trucks, the loud cars, kids with their boom boxes playing, and things like that, the average car, you don't hear. The theater puts out more noise than I believe should be putting out, okay? And the vibration, you don't feel vibration from 9 Highway, all the traffic, if you shut down that theater completely, all the traffic, and you can send monitors out or whatever you'd like, you won't feel the vibration of even the heaviest traffic going down the street. So, the vibration problem is definitely coming from the property where the theater is located, and as far as Mark's house goes, his relationship between the distance to his house makes it probably three times greater than it is for me, considering the fact that I'm partially deaf, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Weinberg, no further questions.
Got any, any other?
No, I mean, there was, no, none of my neighbors.
No, thank you, that's it, we rest.
Mr. Chair, I know Mr. Sonnenblatt is here, Mr. Sonnenblatt, do you wish to cross-examine any witnesses, make any statements, present us anything?
Yes, I do.
Come on up.
Thank you.
Mr. Cuchero, you think it'd be wise to bring Mr. Howard up?
I think after everyone has spoken, maybe, or before the public, but after Mr. Sonnenblatt. But, you know, it's, it's also up to him, it's not.
Just one question, Mark, Mr. Parisi, I believe at the last hearing you testified that, and you said to the board, that there would be no noise emanating from the theater, you've sort of gone back and forth on that, is, is that still your position?
Mr. Sonnenblatt, we went over that ad nauseam.
Okay.
The position is, the statement we read from page nine of the, of the resolution.
Fine, that's, and again, in all, in all situations, when, I have no further questions, Mr. Parisi, I do have a statement to make, though, in terms of what is going down on this particular application.
Does it, does it have to do with whether the zoning officer was correct or incorrect?
Yes, and, and it's in relationship even to the testimony about a letter that he received from Mr. Burson, I.
Well, we're not really reviewing that letter, we're reviewing.
Well, again, there's so much being brought into this, but the fact of the matter is that there is no violation of any standard that this board was misled in any way, shape, or form, there is no indication that there is a violation, that notwithstanding the statements by Mr. Jema, and this has gone on for a year and a half, so we're not talking about something that's just happened yesterday, you easily could have, and he, Mr. Parisi could have, with Mr. Jema's help perhaps, obtained the services of a noise expert, could have determined what the situation was, and they have not done so, what they're basically, they're looking for relief by putting pressure basically on this applicant, without having to go through the process of even a litigation for nuisance, where they could sue on the basis that.
Well, their motivation is not relevant, it's whether Mr. Howard was correct or incorrect.
It is, but from the point of view of the zoning officer, there is no violation, there is nothing that this board.
Well, the zoning officer's going to speak for himself as to what his point of view is.
I'm, I'm sure, but I, you have read the letter, I concur with his, his opinion, obviously. Basically, this board, and again, I know, Mr. Parisi, we had spoken before, there never was a statement made with regard to the fact that there would be no noise.
I've got to object to that, and that's, that's incorrect as based upon the record.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Jema.
Well, first of all, you'll direct yourself to the chair.
All right, Mr. Chair, Mr. Jema is indicating.
Mr. Jema's objection is noted, so.
Is noted, thank you. There's nothing that ever was said by anybody that there would be no noise emanating outside the theater, and yes, there was a question about how you determine noise, whether it be the low-rumbling noise or a D B A. I think that the determination by the county and by the township, what standards we have, we have met them, and I do not believe that this board has even the authority to do any more at this particular point, no matter what your personal feelings may be, based on Mr. Parisi's testimony, to take any further action at this point in time.
You say, we have jurisdiction to fashion any remedy we'd like, if we find that there was.
There was a violation, but in this case, based on the testimony given by the.
Well, when you say no authority, that speaks to jurisdiction.
Well, the, the authority, in other words, without having some tangible basis.
You're saying that he hasn't met his burden of proof.
That's right, there's, there's nothing tangible. That this board could make a decision that there was inappropriate testimony based upon your decision.
No one is saying there's inappropriate testimony either, I think the issue is, what was the testimony?
Well, the testimony speaks for itself, based on.
I think it does, Mr. Sonnenblatt.
It speaks for itself.
I think we've all agreed that it speaks for itself.
And with that, rather than take any more of your time, I'm interested to hear what your zoning officer has to say, but once again, we're going through this over and over and over again, and we have spoken to Mr. Parisi, our clients have spoken to Mr. Parisi, I spoke to Mr. Parisi, and there have been discussions, but I, I think at this point, I think.
Well, those discussions are irrelevant.
Oh, irrelevant, so.
The only relevant issue was whether Mr. Howard was correct or incorrect in the decision that he made.
He is, in my opinion, he is correct, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, at this time, Mr. Howard, you want to come forward and please note that Mr. Howard was already sworn?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, I want to start.
Actually, just for the record, can you just state and spell your name for us?
Sure, Matthew Howard, M A T T H E W H O W A R D.
And your position with the township, Mr. Howard?
Land use, land use officer, Howell Township.
And what are your responsibilities?
Code enforcement, housing, land use, enforcing ordinances, resolutions, and everything to the like.
Okay, go ahead.
So, this comes down to me, in my position, as a burden of proof. We, at the township, we get dozens of complaints every month, the first step is to verify the complaint, go out, take a look at it, put eyes on it, a lot of times, the issue's simple, grass is too tall, business being run out of a spot it's not supposed to be, paperwork's not in place, we then proceed. In this case, the burden of proof for me to act, or to have my code enforcement officers act further, was not met, we've reviewed the resolutions, we've reviewed the same documentation that has been gone over endlessly here, and the issue becomes whether the statements made in the resolution and in the testimony were broken. The complaining witness has not provided me any documentation to reflect that it has. My perception of an issue, whether for or against his perception, does not hold merit here, because I'm not a sound engineer, nor can my ears detect what is different from Route 9 than what is not. The issue remains a burden of proof, and my letter, as well as Monmouth County Board of Health's letter, simply states, if more information comes into being, if further studies are done, and we are given proof, we will revisit the issue. As of right now, that proof has not been provided, and I cannot pursue the issue any further, simply because I have not met my burden of proof to charge the, the property owner or the applicant with anything stating that they've broken any type of statement or ordinance or anything of the like, that is simply my statement.
So, Mr. Howard, just, when you're saying burden of proof, I mean, the burden of proof is whether they violated it or didn't violate it, right?
Right.
So, and also, I want to, in reviewing your letter, because there were some statements, I think, before, that your office was improperly considering ordinance or statutory standards rather than resolution standards, when I read the letter, there is a statement in the letter, that the acoustic engineer also testified that any sound from the theater would be less than the traffic noise coming from Route 9, so, you were not simply applying a statute or an ordinance, you were cognizant of the specific statement that was contained in the resolution of approval.
That is absolutely correct, and as Mr. Mallon touched on before, we don't have the personnel, the equipment, or the training to do these studies ourselves, we contract out, we sub out, or we enlist the help of Monmouth County Board of Health to do all of our noise violation, noise complaint issues, because we cannot do them in-house.
And what was their response?
The response by Monmouth County Board of Health was that no violation existed, that no D B A, the change in the D B A scale did not occur, and that they tried to see scale, but because it wasn't a constant noise or a constant frequency, they could not detect it, and Monmouth County Board of Health said no violation.
Just to be though, very specific, when Monmouth County Board of Health is talking about no violation, they're speaking of the statutory violation, however, I think it's, it's relevant that there, when they brought their meters out, and I guess it was two different kinds, they did not register any noise, is that correct?
For me to pursue this issue further.
So, if there were, if there were no noise that was being detected or metered under those two tests, would it be your opinion that although they were testing for statutory standards, that the ordinance, that the resolution requirement was also not being violated?
Correct.
And do you feel that, because there was also, I think, the last gentleman, I'm sorry, Mr. Weinberg, was, was, he had some very good testimony, that a lot of it has to do with, I think, vibration, so, your reading of the resolution, would that include issues of vibration?
I would enlist a professional's help in answering that question, again, we would look at Monmouth County Board of Health.
Well, what I'm saying, though, is, when they're talking about sound, do you find sound to be different than vibration?
Not necessarily, however, I would like, for me to go a step further, I would like to have proof that any vibration felt at this property is now different with the movie theater playing.
Well, let me even be more specific, does this resolution talk about vibration at all?
It does not.
Okay, and the statement from their noise engineer, Mr. Dotty, does that talk about vibration?
It does not.
Okay.
To pursue this issue further, from my end, would have been good to go to Monmouth County Board of Health, that work was already done, the results were given, and for the record, I am not aware of any other noise complaints on, in this area regarding this issue.
Okay, Mr. Jema, I'm sorry, Mr. Howard, are you finished?
Yes.
Mr. Jema, you have any cross-examination?
Please, if I may, just, just to be clear, you concede that in fact, part of your job is to enforce not only ordinances but resolutions, correct?
Correct.
And you reviewed this resolution, in fact, it was shown to you by Mr. Parisi or was shown to, obviously, Mr. Parisi, is that correct?
Correct.
And it specifically pointed out that the resolution in question was as to paragraph eleven.
Pardon, Mr. Jema, can you, I know you're standing, but can you speak to the mic there?
I'll speak to the mic there.
Thank you.
But, and did they specifically point out, page nine, paragraph eleven, the reference as to the standard we discussed tonight, greater or lesser than the noise coming from Route 9?
Correct, yes.
And when you went to the Monmouth County Board of Health, did they indicate to you that that was the standard they were applying, or were they applying a standard from the state statute?
They did not specify.
Did you ask them?
No.
Did you ask them what standard they applied?
No.
How many times have you been to Mr. Parisi's property when the movie's been playing?
None, and I would like to address that.
If I may, you can certainly address it, how many times have you sent somebody from your office to Mr. Parisi's property when the movie was playing?
Before my time, somebody was there.
Who was there?
I believe Alex Burson was.
And what did he find?
I, I don't find his or anyone's perception at my office to be relevant, because we need some defendable proof that this is, that this item of the resolution is not being complied with.
So, just to be clear, the defendable proof that you need is a violation from the ordinance, is that correct?
No.
A violation from what?
From the resolution.
And what defendable proof would be there from the violation from the resolution?
Studies, tests, measurements.
And what would they measure if in fact it's a low-rumbling frequency sound that is not a frequency sound that's pursuant to ordinance?
I am not a sound engineer, and I don't think I can answer that question.
So, you couldn't even answer the question if they provided you the test that you want, is that correct?
I think if there was a certain test given, and there was a before measurement and an after measurement showing a difference, and it was directly correlated to whatever noise or vibration. noise or vibration is coming from the movie theater, I do believe I would be able to interpret that.
And how would you interpret that, then, as being greater or lesser than the noise coming from Route Nine?
I think that, that would have to also be met to, that, that information would also have to be provided for me to evaluate.
And you think that that's what the applicant has to do, rather than yourself or somebody from your office simply going to the property and listening?
Correct.
And you'd rather not send somebody out there until that information's provided to you?
Correct.
No further questions.
Jack, Jennifer?
When Mr. Howard was asked to check on a noise problem, we always think of decibels. That's how the statute's written, that's how we always measure it. We don't, I've never seen anything measure vibration, my own self. So, in defense of Mr. Howard, when he got a noise complaint, he sent somebody out to measure decibels, and that's what they did.
Respectfully, Mr. Mallon, he didn't do that. He relied upon the county--
Well, I'm sorry. That's what he asked for. When you ask for a noise complaint, Gordon, and that goes in any county, I can tell you, Ocean County does the same thing. When you measure things, you measure it based upon the statute. The statute's written in decibels. That's why they cited in the previous paragraph.
Mr. Howard also testified to that, that he contacts--
That would be the only comment I would have.
Okay. Ms. Beam?
No, I would really defer to Jack on this. I mean, absent us being provided any kind of documentation that demonstrates that that provision in the, in the resolution is not being complied with, it's difficult for me to ascertain whether or not there's an issue. I agree with Jack, you know, there's a difference between vibrations and noise, and I, and I'm not dismissing that there's an issue. I'm 100% convinced that there is an issue here, but I'm getting the distinct impression that it's a vibration-related issue as opposed to a noise-frequency-related issue. And absent any kind of measurement or standard, it's difficult for us to make a decision, in my opinion, that the resolution is not being complied with.
Mr. Cuchero, can I ask you a legal question?
That's why I'm here.
I understand. The problem that I am having here is the resolution is in DBA. Our standards are in DBA. Wouldn't this be, have to go through an alternative manner to be able to get--
No, I think, I, I'm not looking at this as to resolving the issue. I'm looking, or the quality of life issue, anyway. I'm looking at this determining whether the resolution has been satisfied. And I think that there's a challenge here for the, for the applicant, Mr. Parisi, because as, as Mr. Mallon said, we basically have an accepted form of measurement that expresses the level of sound, and it's DBA. And when you read the paragraph, the, the paragraph talks in DBA, and the conclusion is based upon the DBA, you know, that you're not going to hear a DBA greater than, than Route Nine. I think you have to read the, the paragraph in its totality. You know, with that said, I think what Mr. Howard said earlier is also, you know, important for, for the applicant tonight, which is, you know, this doesn't foreclose any future complaint if it's put together, you know, in a different manner. But, you know, I don't want to reach any conclusions before we hear the public either, but I think that, from a legal perspective, it's difficult for the board when a method of measurement cannot be identified, and that the only method of measurement that we're given is, it's what you hear, you know, with, with your ear, which is not necessarily the most precise way to, to go about it. I mean, when I, when, when I asked, Mr. Gemma said, there might be another way to measure it, but they just haven't investigated it fully. So, you know, from a legal perspective, I'm always more comfortable when there is an actual scientific method associated with evaluating something like this, and there's not here. And I think it's also relevant, when I asked Mr. Howard earlier, whether the county was measuring for violations of the statute or not, doesn't seem to be, you know, entirely dispositive when their measurement comes out at zero. A measurement of zero, whether they're measuring for the statute or compliance with the resolution, it would seem to satisfy both. But, you know, again, I think, you know, we should probably open it to the public. People may have another viewpoint, but, you know, that's sort of my, you know, legal analysis up to this point.
Is there any questions from the board for Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Howard, did you visit the site?
I did not. The, the study was done before my time with the township. Again, my perception, whether for, well, whether against, if it was going to be against the complaint, would have ended up here, anyway. My perception for it would not have offered me any proof that I could go and act on.
And at, at that time, you were aware that the county had already done?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions?
I think there's one hooker in here. He said, "Any noise." The expert said, "Any noise."
If any.
Not any. If any noise. That's what I, I was trying to highlight. And that certainly was a wide ocean. Forget about the standards. He essentially said, "Any noise."
No, that's not what he said.
If any. If any noise.
The, the statement is, it was his overall opinion that the expected sound, if any, from the theater operation would be less than traffic on Route Nine. That's the statement, or that's what's in the resolution.
What he was saying was, he wasn't sure whether it would even generate any noise, but if there were any noise generated, it would be less than that which comes from Route Nine.
In his opinion.
Oh, yes.
One of the things that gets me is they never say, when this whole thing was going on, how much actual power, noise, noise power is a vibration, okay? They never said, anytime, what levels are in the theater. You always have to have a reference. And if that reference, we can use that reference, put a measurement on the outside, forget about the standards, put it on the C, which is, goes flat across the frequency. And a measurement goes like your, the response to your ear. So, I think a measurement in, in, let's say, on a C meter, inside and outside, and what power level are they, they said when they cut the volume down as a courtesy, which I think is a good neighbor, knowing this gentleman has a problem. You know, they say, sometimes we'll meet you halfway, we'll cut the volume down. It is exciting scenes where you get an explosion. Cut that down. Let's forget about the theater effect. We've got people here who are affected negatively by the sounds. Everybody admits that, if there's some vibration, vibration, sound vibration at any frequency is sound.
Mr. Mon, do you have any questions for Mr. Howard? We'll, we'll get to that in a moment.
What you said was right, because you're going by the standards.
Exactly.
Mr. Anderson, I'd like to just read across Mr. Howard on one thing that he mentioned in the colloquy with Mr. Cuchero.
Okay.
If I may. Mr. Howard, your letter is dated May, I'm sorry, February 28th, 2017, and in context of that letter--
Can you speak to the mic?
I know, I'm trying to. In the context of that letter, you also attach the report from the Monmouth County Board of Health, is that correct?
Yes.
Can I ask you to go to the last page of the investigator comments from the Monmouth County Board of Health? There was a comment made by Mr. Cuchero that, in fact, they found no violations of any sound. Could you just, if you could, read the investigator comments in its entirety, particularly looking at the last two sentences about the C scale?
Caller complaining of noise from the escape theater. MCHD onsite at 10:00 PM on Wednesday, 5:25, winds calm, temperature 76. Facility has two IMAX theaters. Caller states that the rumbling of the IMAX can be heard in his house. Meter on A scale did not detect a change in noise, tried the C scale, but it can only be used when the noise is a pure, steady tone. This was not the case, no violation.
So, it's not a function of that they didn't detect anything on the C scale. What they're saying is, they can only detect it if it's a pure and steady tone. Is that correct?
I don't see them saying they detected anything on the C scale.
No. They didn't say, I'll try this again. They did not say they did not detect, there was no noise on the C scale. What they said was, just so we're clear, they can only detect the noise when it is a pure and steady tone. Is that what they said?
That is what they said.
Is it your interpretation of what they said, that they didn't hear any noise on the C scale?
I am reading it exactly as you are.
So, when Mr. Cuchero made the comment, there was no noise heard on the C scale, it's simply an interpretation of what they said, and they didn't say that.
What did they hear on the C scale, then, Mr. Gemma?
They didn't say that either, but the point is, it's not what the report says.
It could be either or interpretation.
It could be, but I don't want the report, I don't want the report or the boards to think that they found no noise on the C scale. They said they couldn't detect it on their machine, but it wasn't a pure and steady tone. That's the only point I make.
Okay.
So, I don't know if the board have any more questions of Mr. Howard, or--
Questions of any of the witnesses?
If not, we can just put it up to the public.
Okay, at this time, I'll take a motion to open the public.
So, move, Mr. Chairman?
Moved by Mr. Corlicchio. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? At this time, we'll take comments or questions of the witnesses from the public. Have the police come forward, be sworn in?
Hey, sir, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
My name is John Green, J.O.H.N.G.R.E.E.N.
And your address, Mr. Green?
Eight Fox Hill Drive. I'm an owner of Eight Fox Hill Drive. That was the original place that the movie theater wanted to go, and although I can't speak of what's happening and the noise that he hears, I can speak on the fact that this man's client sat here three years ago and said that they were going to come into the community and be a good member of the community, and they were gonna, you know, not, you know, be a bad neighbor. I mean, there was questions about parking, there were questions about the noise, there was questions about security, and each time we asked a question, they said that, you know, they were gonna take care of everything. And here they are, saying that, you know, there's not going to be any noise, and there's nothing but noise. So, I'm just here to make the statement that they said they were going to come in, be a good neighbor, and they were gonna help out the public, and it doesn't seem that they're doing that.
Any other comments?
Okay.
Yes, sir?
That's basically it, that, you know, they said they were going to come in, be a good neighbor, be a part of the community, and doesn't seem that they're doing it. It seems that when they turned the volume down, everything was okay, but for a few dollars, they turned the volume back up. It's only a couple of people.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? See, and I can I have a motion to close?
So, move, Mr. Chairman.
Hold on one second, sir. I think my wife--
Come forward, be sworn in, please.
You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I swear.
Okay, provide us your testimony.
Okay, my name is Sandra Parisi, I'm the wife for Mr. Mark Parisi. I just want to say something. I know you guys trying to get this town better, like, building things for everybody's lives here and have more access to good things, that goodwill, or whatever it is, but I know you guys don't live in my house, we don't live in our house, but we this every single night. I know you guys just trying to make everybody's happy, or try, like, you going by the, this rule, this rule, and the other rule, or what you hearing. I understand that, because this is why the laws, or whatever rules you have, that to building any, or develop, or create any ordinance, whatever it is. It's just I want to let you know, I living in the house, and I really, when I moved here to Howard, I living in Garfield, and I living in a busy street, okay? And I can't hear the cars, I can't hear sometimes the train, I can't hear that. I understand that, but when I moved here, it's because this, this place is calm, and I don't hear anything at all before the movie theater was in there, and I like, really like, was peace all the time, and that's what the things I like for this town. And another thing I moved from this town is because the education for my kids. So, now I'm living in a place, when I hear all this every day, is raining or not raining, is raining or not raining, even at night. So, I understand, like, you maybe try to defend or buy anything, what say or no say, but when you, a person who knows, like, about engineer, acoustic, whatever it is, you need to know every kind of sounds possible can have in any construction or anything like that. Doesn't say, be like, decibels, or DBA, or DBC, I don't know, but you not living in there, we living in there, and I understand, maybe you don't feel the same way, but we living this daily. It's unfair for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? See, and I can I have a motion?
So, move, Mr. Chairman?
Motion by Mr. Corlicchio.
Second?
Second by Ms. Sancomity. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Mr. Anderson, I'd like the opportunity just to address the board in summation--
Yes, sir.
--and to make a request to the board. In summation, Mr. Cuchero and I agree on a lot of things. There's one thing we don't necessarily agree on, I just want to put it on the record. Mr. Cuchero says that sole standard is one of, found in, on paragraph 11, page nine, which is noise greater than coming from the Route Nine, because that's in your resolution. It's our opinion, as a matter of law, that, in fact, all the representations made by the applicant in front of a board, even those not found in the resolution, are, in fact, representations that are conditions by which the board can impose. Representation, as testified by Mr. Parisi, is that in the first hearing of April of 2015, Mr. Bagwell said there would be no noise. We don't have a transcript. But I've spoke to my client, we asked for permission to do two things. Thing number one, we asked for permission to carry this, we will provide that transcript, that section, so you can consider that representation made by the applicant, that there would not be noise emanating from the theater, which is a finding of fact, albeit not in the resolution, but made on the record. That's number one. Number two, my client has agreed, I've spoken to him, that we will go out and we will make a test. We'd ask you, therefore, to postpone making any determination. We will do a DBC finding of fact and present that to the board for the limited purpose of, this is what a sound engineer has determined to be, in fact, the findings both before, from Route Nine and without from Route Nine, so you have a standard of DBC, so you can make a determination. We'll present that 10 days prior to the next hearing. We'll postpone for another period of time, so that is on the record 10 days before. I'll provide a courtesy copy to Mr. Sonnenblick ahead of time, so he can get his sound expert, our sound expert is full of it, but nevertheless, that way you have an objectified standard by which you can say there is a standard, whether it is greater or lesser than, than Route Nine. My client will bear that cost. So, I'm asking you to postpone, we'll carry on the record till, until June. We will then ask you, if we don't have it 10 days prior, to carry again, I'll send it, send it out, so you have the standard and you have the transcript. The last thing, Mr. Sonnenblick, it will continue and has made tonight the representation that my client has a remedy. My client's remedy is go sue him. And that might be a remedy. There's two things. One, my client has to exhaust all administrative remedies before he goes to court. This is an administrative remedy. Number two, my client should not be forced to bear the burden to make sure that someone complies with the resolution. The sole issue is their compliance. And so, towards that, we will show you the statements made on the transcript, from Mr. Bagwell, to this board, not greater or lesser than Route Nine, no noise. Number two, we'll provide you the test. We'd ask simply to postpone any hearing on the record, and decision on the record until in fact that information's provided for the board to consider.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chair?
It's the applicant's application. A reviewing court would look dimly upon the board, preventing the applicant from submitting additional proofs, if they so wished. I don't think that would be particularly defensible if the, if, in fact, the board were to rule against the applicant-- to rule against the applicant, that hasn't happened yet, but if the applicant wants to provide additional documents, I don't think the board, you know, is really in a position to tell him, no, you can't, particularly, we're not up against a timeframe, this is the first hearing in the process. What I will say though is, on the, whatever it is that you're gonna submit, obviously on those limited documents, or whatever it is, you know, it would be reopened for questioning. But, you know, one of the concerns that's been expressed tonight was the lack of information. So if the applicant wants to provide some additional information, I think that the board is hard pressed not to allow him that, that opportunity.
I'm sorry, Mr. Nansen?
He was asking Mr. Sonnenblick if he had an objection.
I understand Mr. Cuchero's point, and at all times, and we've had this discussion before, if there was anything that was presented to us where we violated the ordinance in any fashion, again, I don't know how, I'm not a sound expert either, but basically, certainly if you want to come back and discuss standards, but the question for the board, and I guess really, we're just appealing the statement by the zoning officer, is that there is no violation at such time as he would be given information from, as we said, in the future, then he can make a different determination, as the case may be. I just don't think the board has the ability, based upon the testimony before it, and the fact that there never was any testimony that there would be no noise, so even though we're talking about a different decibel versus vibration level, the fact is, I think this matter, I think this matter is concluded from the point of view of the appeal of the zoning officer. If they want to come back and make another complaint, and come back with additional evidence for the zoning officer, he can then make a decision based upon what he's been given. I don't think there's anything further this board can do or should do, because basically it's an appeal of his, of his determination, and until the time he gets some other information, which he can be given, he can come back and do another report. Otherwise, what's the point? There has to be some violation for this board to consider from the point of view of this resolution.
Well, I think that the point is that we have no information today that shows that there's any difference in noise from Route 9, you know, with or without the movie, and that's what's being provided, that's what they say they're gonna provide, I, you know, we don't have it, but that's what they say it's gonna provide, so.
But that goes, that doesn't go, if I may, Mr. Cuchero, doesn't it go to the zoning officer's report, not to the issue before the board?
That is the issue before the board, the zoning officer's report is the only issue before the board, whether that reached the correct conclusion or not.
Well, the zoning officer testified that he wasn't given any information, now if he's given information, because something comes back, he can then take a look at it and come back with a report based upon the information that he has now been given, I would assume. I'm just saying.
Well, I don't, I have to tell you, I don't find that a citizen has to engage an acoustics expert and provide a professional report to the zoning officer in order to generate an investigation. So, I don't, I don't agree with you on that.
Once again, I'm not, I'm not.
I think, I think it's relevant, I think it's relevant, and it goes directly towards the sole issue in this case, which is, you know, what is the sound, you know, is there a sound above and beyond what you would hear from Route 9? The, we've spoken extensively today about how, you know, we, we didn't have a scientific method, there was no scientific way of expressing the noise that the applicant had, and that is what they're seeking to, to address through this. So, I appreciate, you know, your, your legal position, but Mr. Chair, I would, I would disagree with it, and I think that the board would not be in a good position if they were in appeal, and the very information that we were asking for, that the applicant said that they were gonna provide, we didn't allow them to provide.
Correct. I, I'm under the, I, I follow you, Ron, halfway. I think that the applicant, any information that is given back to the board should go through the land use.
Well, I think they can go both places.
Well, it should go, we should have, not just come back to the board, but it should go through the land use, through Mr. Howard.
This is, this is our.
With the report.
This is our hearing though, so we have to bring it to conclusion.
I understand.
However, however, I think you're right, that if they provide that to Mr. Howard, and there's something in there.
Exactly.
That brings them out, that may change the course of how the hearing goes. So, I think, yes, both of those parallel tracks can be.
We will provide two things to Mr. Howard, as well as to this board. One, the transcript that quotes Mr. Bagwell, no noise, the status is standard.
But I don't think, honestly, I don't think Mr. Howard, the transcript needs to come to this board at the next hearing.
Respectfully, Mr. Nansen.
Well, I don't think you need anyone's permission to provide Mr. Howard with whatever you want to provide.
Mr. Howard testified, his role is to enforce the resolution, his role is to enforce the representations made in front of this board. I think it's dispositive upon him that he has the full transcript of what took place.
I agree.
Provide copies of that to this board, and to Mr. Howard, and I just want to be clear, that the test that we're gonna provide is not because we provided no evidence on the record, in fact, we provided undisputed evidence on the record that there's a low rumbling sound from Mr. Parisi and from his neighbor.
That's not disputed, sir.
Okay, but I want to be clear for the record, when someone said there's no evidence, so the test is simply.
Nobody has.
No, there is no evidence.
First of all, that's Mr. Sonnenblick's statement.
So I just want to make sure.
What we're affording you is the opportunity to supplement what you've done.
That's exactly what I want, this is supplementation of the testimony provided tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I could just.
Yes, Jennifer.
Mr. Gemma, can I just clarify one thing that you had said? Initially, you said you were gonna give us pieces of the transcript that show those statements were made. I would just request the transcript in its entirety, because I don't want to come back in a month or two, and then there's an argument over, we're taking it out of context, we don't have the full picture, I'd rather get.
I think he just said the entire transcript.
I'll provide, I'm gonna highlight that section, providing the entire transcript. Mr. I mean, the entire transcript.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that, thank you.
Excuse me, I, I have a question here.
Yes, sir.
Because this is really getting out of hand. As a network engineer, I go by standards. When a standard, there's a protocol that talks to another protocol, there's a handshake that goes back and forth, that's the standard. If that handshake doesn't work, it doesn't work, that's also in the standard. There are also standards for bandwidth, specific number. So far tonight, I've heard the standard, the standard, what is the standard? Wait, hold on. You also, it says in the resolution about Route 9, the noise level from Route 9, what is the noise level on Route 9? There is a noise level at 12 o'clock in the afternoon, at 12:05, 11 o'clock, 2 o'clock in the morning, there's also, all sorts of noise levels coming from Route 9. It could be 165 decibels at 12 o'clock, and 2 at the night. So what I need is the standard. I want to know what the standard is, decibels, frequencies, and I also would like to know what decibel level, what frequency level starts interfering with the quality of life.
We will ask, and I appreciate that, and that's sort of the guidance that we're looking for.
Okay.
Because one of the problems that we have is the resolution is somewhat ambiguous. It uses simply, in a, the resolution now, we also will show you the transcript, where it was even more definitive, and by the way, a transcript that Mr. Parisi played for Mr. Howard, where Mr. Bagwell said no noise, but we'll point that out, but those are the standards, and I concede, that's the problem we have. There really isn't a definitive standard, once you go beyond the ordinance, nevertheless, it's a violative in our position by the resolution, and that's where we're trying to go to.
But when you bring in, because there's, as it, as Jack said, that we go by the state standard, so is that gonna be coming in?
No, it's not, because we've conceded that the noise coming from the theater doesn't violate the DBA state statute. We're saying it's a DBC violation, and that violates the resolution. So I want to be clear.
How does that violate the resolution?
But what is the DBC, what is the DBC standard?
They, well, that's, the DBC standard you've created, not me, but you, in your resolution.
Well, I like, how we create.
But no, and when I say you, I mean, it's more.
Well, I, I think we should, Mr. Gemma understands that it's gonna have to be, you know, has to address your issues when he, when he comes back. He doesn't have the report right now, but he understands what the board likely wants to see out of that report, in order to, you know, give it full weight, so I think.
But see, even, I, to reiterate, Mr. San Clemente, there is a standard, there is gonna be a national standard, a DBC, with, with the national, across the country, there is gonna be that standard, what's acceptable to quality of life, there is gonna be that standard somewhere. We need to see where this is versus that standard.
I understand what you said, Mr. Nansen, we, we will try to apply that information.
Okay.
And the content, okay, thank you. So we'd ask if it carried on the record?
Uh, Mr. Cuchero?
We, we have two meetings in June, both have one application on. The first is SMC Properties, which was carried tonight, and that's on June 12th. On June 26th, excuse me, we have KBL.
What is that?
KBL.
Victorite Golf Courts.
Victorite Golf Court, right there, Victoria Warehouse. So the first one, SMC, is a bifurcated application, it's already started.
We're gonna need that all night, that's probably gonna take all night.
Well, then, we can move it to the.
Same way with Gerard, that's probably gonna be an all night or two.
Do we have a first meeting in July?
How, how, how much time are you gonna need to?
I'm probably gonna need, statistically, we're gonna do the best we can, but the 26th, but I, if you're telling me we're not until July, we'll have enough time.
Okay.
We have July 10th.
Okay.
And there's nothing on that night, right?
No.
And, nothing on July 10th.
I, I have an available July 10th, but I think we're talking about getting this report 10 days before any date.
Yes.
And so it could be analyzed, and then I have to take that report from my client's point of view, and analyze that, and produce something as well. So I would, I would suggest that whatever date you pick, that if we need more time at that point to respond, that we can go to another date that's convenient for all the parties.
Well, we'll, we'll consider that, you know, as, as.
Well, see, I, I would like to know Mr. Howard's response time, because I know he's probably gonna need time to respond back.
Yeah, I mean, it really depends on the information given, the, the amount of information, and ultimately, who we're gonna need to seek some, some outside help from as well, to maybe analyze the results to a level that we can, at the township, break down and understand and interpret.
Well, I think, Mr. Chair, we can lay it down for the 10th, and if, you know, the situation is such that the 10th's not a realistic date, you know, we can carry it from there, or, you know, and, all our, all our options are available, you know, depending upon what we get.
We would do this, we would ask to carry it until, not further notice, we'll seek to provide a copy as soon as it's received, so it doesn't prejudice on the township or Mr. Sonnenblick's client, must spend sufficient time, and we understand the obligations of the client that have it, have these 10 days prior, we'll seek to do much better than that, so we are heard, resolved, and addressed on the 10th.
Can I say something? I mean, this is my life, I mean, we're talking about my life, and the quality of life, and the degraded quality of life that I've been experiencing for a year now, we're talking about tremendous financial expenses that are being shifted onto me at a time when I'm just trying to get by and support my wife and my family, and having to spend thousands of dollars, because we all know it's gonna cost me thousands of dollars to hire a sound engineer to come in and do all this testing, because I already specked it out and called somebody, and I got quotes that were four, five, six thousand dollars to come in and do this. This is disgraceful, that I'm going to have to take.
Sir, I, I want you to, I want you to understand, there is legal remedies for you to follow, that you could go to court over this and get your monies back. This, year before this board, I, I can only go by what testimony is given to us.
I understand.
There is no factual testimony, except for what is in previous documentation before this board, I do not have any professional.
I just have one other comment, that I, I respectfully, I understand what you're saying, Chairman. If, if there seems to be some discrepancy or dispute as to whether or not there were representations made by the vice president of the theater, Mr. Bagwell, as to whether or not.
Sir, I, I can't, I can't go there with that. I don't have the testimony in front.
This is what I was gonna proffer, is that if we obtain a transcript that says.
Sir, I need professional proof.
Well, first of all, there's no proffers, you have an attorney that's gonna make arguments, we're gonna get a transcript, we don't have it yet, and we'll, we'll read it, you know, prior to the next hearing.
My question was, if we get that transcript, and it does say definitively that they.
I will not answer that question. We're gonna have a public hearing after we have the transcript, and we'll determine, you know, its relevance.
Thank you.
I want to try to avoid having to spend money on acoustic engineer, if we can get a transcript that says there's gonna be no noise, because then anybody, including Mr. Howard, can go out there and say, I hear noise.
Sir, there, let me explain to you, there is a standard, a professional, national sound standard. Sir, we've got the Monmouth County Board of Health that tells us, is, there's no violation. I need proof from you that there is a violation. You don't understand that, if you're in a court of law, that's a different scenario, but I need proof from you stating that there is something not in line with the standards. It, I understand, I really sympathize with you.
The three people said you can't measure the DBC.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, Mr. Parisi is represented by counsel.
Yes, sir.
They're coming back, I don't think it.
I understand.
Who's any of us.
Mr. Cuchero, may I just ask a question?
Yes.
For a second, maybe educate me a little bit.
Yeah.
My understanding is that we're here tonight to rule on the appeal of what Mr. Howard decided, and now we're gonna get new evidence to come in that wasn't presented to Mr. Howard when he originally made his decision. I'm not understanding why we don't vote tonight on the appeal, and then if they have new evidence, they make, and they go back to Mr. Howard and say.
They were not under a burden to provide Mr. Howard with any evidence, they filed the complaint, and the complaint was investigated in the manner that you heard, and in order for them to show that the noise doesn't, the noise now is not different from the noise then, in order for them to show that the noise is greater than that which is coming from Route 9 when the movie is playing, that's what they would have to do. They're not, they're not required to provide reports and, and things like that when they're filing a complaint, you know, for, for enforcement, so this is.
Right, but based off the information he had, he made his decision, I'm just trying to say, if they're gonna provide new evidence, if that's provided to Mr. Howard, it seemed like when he was up here, he said he's gonna take that into consideration.
Well, he may, and that may change the trajectory, you know, of the, of the hearing.
And if I could, Mr. Cuchero, Mr. Bloom, the reason we're providing the testing is simply to supplement the evidence provided on the record, which was testamentary evidence of Mr. Parisi, as well as the neighbor. So I don't want to be clear that we haven't provided any evidence, it's simply supplemental.
Yes, sir.
Question for our attorney, would it make sense for the board members, whether one at a time or two at a time, to visit this gentleman's property and witness this mess for ourselves?
Here, I mean, under the municipal land use law, you are permitted to visit the site, as you say, not, not in a, I prefer you do it by yourself, frankly.
Obviously, not four or five guys.
Right, well, I would, I'd prefer you did it just by yourself, but certainly not in a quorum. Mr. Gemma, do you have a?
My client will be more than happy at any time, particularly in the evening, if members of this board cannot.
There's, there's sound and there's noise.
You can come over tonight, I guarantee.
I don't want to hear.
Mr. Sonnenblick, you, do you have an objection?
Yes, I have an objection to that.
What is your objection to that?
First of all, we are not, we are not in the public hearing of the application, either to get the movies, or even with Texas Roadhouse, which was merely not related to this. This is, if there is going to be a determination based upon whatever information comes out from an expert, where I think, by the way, and I agree with Mr. Bloom, actually, that I believe this hearing is over from the point of view of what is. The zoning officer's report, however, however, I'm not gonna get involved in the, in the little technical aspect, but in terms of coing and listening and the like, I do not believe that that is something that this board, as individuals, can make a determination that there is a violation of.
You have a statute that says that, or a case or anything?
Well, I, I would take a look at that, but once again, when we, when we have a board meeting, or a planning board meeting, the members, they go, and there are people there, they, and they're looking at things specifically, not subjectively, this is a subjective determination.
Well, I, I'm just confused as to what case has ever been out there, or what statute that says a board member on. that says a board member on, under any section of 40, 55, D-70, doesn't have the ability to go to a site.
When, when, when a matter is before it, in the public hearing aspect of it, I believe that they would be able to take a look and see what is going on in a particular application. In this case, we're talking about the report of our zoning officer.
I understand exactly what the application is, but I just don't-
All right, so I do, too, and so it's a zoning officer issue. I think that the board certainly can go to Mr. Parisi's house and listen to it, but I think there should be some standard that they should have, as opposed to simply having a subjective determination of what they're hearing, assuming that they feel a vibration on the second that they do.
Well, I'm, I don't think we need to, I don't know, no one's gone yet, Mr. Sonnenblick.
Well, that's true.
I mean, I don't find that there's anything in the municipal land use law that would prohibit that. I mean, the board can act as it wishes, but I don't think there's anything in the MLUL. I think, to the contrary, you know, there's a lot of cases that talk about people, you know, board members going to the site, and there's rules about going to the site.
Yes.
So, I think quite the opposite.
Well, then, in this case, would you suggest that the board members not speak to each other after they do go, and before they come back to the board, in other having-
Yes.
Well, again, once again, that's one of the concerns that I have in terms of how this would come about generally, and I'm not concerned about what they're going to hear or not hear, just how the, the procedure. Because basically, Mr. O'Donnell goes, and he hears one thing, and Mr. Armada hears another thing and the like, and they have conversations about it, we're now talking about something other than-
I think I just directed them not to-
Mr. Cuchero, I, I've got a question. As for, I, I know the MLUL is very clear on applications, but this is not an application, this is a determination.
Well, as I said, the board can do as it, as it wishes, but it-
I, I just want to make sure we're legal now.
It is an application, I mean, they filed an application for Section 70, it's not a development application-
No.
But it is an application.
We would welcome the board, and we'll make accommodations for their schedule. We think it's important that they actually use the subjective test that you created, is it more greater or lesser than round mine? And Mr. Parisi will provide, the next board secretary has to do best time, so it's a conference tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just, Section 3 of the municipal land use law defines an application for development, does not, so it's very specific there, it does not define an application itself.
Make sure we're legal.
You know, there's no, there's no prohibition against it, I would just, one, you cannot show up in a quorum, that's absolutely prohibited, that would be a violation of the open public meetings.
I, I would just address the board that if you do want to go, reach out to Eileen, I, no, I, just go individually. I, I don't want two or more, you know, individual-
And, and no sending emails or anything else, you know, expressing, you know, what, what you saw.
Exactly.
We'll have a public hearing, and you're not required to go, if you don't, you know, you could rely upon the proofs that are, you know, being submitted to you.
Right.
We would encourage it, there's a lot of dates between now and July 10th.
Right, and I, I just would like, you know, just kind of keep, if one of the board members, just keep the conversations, you know-
We, we understand, we understand the obligations when a board member attends, and we will try very hard, we will keep within the confines of what's appropriate.
Right, I would, I would recommend no conversation at that point.
Exactly.
While you might want to knock on the door and say to my command.
Yes, you can do that, however, I, I, in the event that somebody does go, I recommend no conversation.
Keep it cordial, not, not anything-
Hi, how are you, go in, and then have a good night, that would be, that would be very appropriate.
We will not discuss this matter.
Correct.
Uh, Mr. Posh just brought, let's get two members at a time, that way, the two members, it's not a he say, she say.
I think it's a lot easier, you don't have a quorum, and I can make sure my mind-
As long as there's a quorum, and I don't even think you need to go in the house, to tell you the truth, I mean-
Right, you could go out to the property.
You're going to hear what you hear, you could be out, you know, parked in front of the house-
Go to the property line.
You know, on the public street. If you pull onto Castle Court, you'll see my garden and my chicken coop over there, you can just walk over by there.
Well, we'll, we'll notify you that we're there, each one of the members would.
I appreciate that.
But you, you don't need to even go in the house.
So, you don't see people walking around your house and wonder who they are?
Yes, so.
Appreciate that.
Okay. And, but I, I'm very strongly urging you to submit any documentations to Mr. Howard, because, you know, if, if there's something in the standards that is not being followed, then this could probably be rectified even prior to coming to the board.
Can I add to that? We will.
That's what I'm saying. The board, right now, we have one thing to do, and that was determine if our land use officer made the right decision.
We understand, and we appreciate the board's courtesy, and we'll, I guess, send this to July 10th.
And, and just, just for the record, we take the position that the board should affirm the zoning officer's decision at this time, and at such time as there's additional evidence. Mr. Gemma is certainly capable of giving it to Mr. Howard or Mr. Parisi, and he can make a new determination for you to review based on what he's saying. So, that's just on the record.
Mr. Cuchero?
Yes.
As far as confirming-
I just have one other question, I think it's kind of an answer, but what is the context of the next hearing after I have received more information, considering that this, as Mr. Bloom has mentioned, is an appeal of my decision-
Well, I think-
Based on the information given at a certain time.
Yeah, so, you're talking about burdens of proof, and that you didn't have enough information, and they're going to provide whatever they think they need to provide to show that there was enough, that there is enough information out there, and that there was a violation. I don't know what they're going to provide, we'll, we'll see. But what I do know is that it would be unwise for this board not to allow the applicant to submit whatever evidence and proofs it wishes to. So, we'll, we'll, reticent to say what the scope is going to be without seeing anything, but it will conform with the strict requirements of how we review appeals under Section 70A.
Mr. Cuchero, not, not to beat a dead horse, but my concern with that is, his determination may change based off of the evidence, and then they're appealing a decision that he no longer agrees with anyway.
Exactly.
Well, then, he can, he can change, and it would become moot. So, you know, if that happens, and there's a different, if there's a change in decision by Mr. Howard, then we would never complete the hearing, it would become moot if he takes a different tact.
Why, that, that's my next question to you. Why not affirm, or whatever, Mr. Howard's decision at this time, and then based on new evidence, that would be a whole different-
Well, it's, it's up, it's up to you, Mr. Chair, but what I'm telling you is that I think that if it goes to court, and we did not allow them to supplement the record-
No, 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 you're not, you're misunderstanding what I'm saying, and I, I think I understand what Mr. Bloom is saying.
Well, if you vote, if, no, but if you vote, that's it, it's over, they're not supplementing anything.
That's this.
They're starting a new procedure.
Exactly, it would be starting a new procedure.
And if I, if I may, one-
Mr. Sonnenblick, I think the board is, is deliberating right now, what it wants to do.
I, I don't see them deliberating, I see the law-
Well, because we're listening to you.
And if I may, Mr. Hanson, there is a prejudice to my client, but the prejudice would be, if you provide more information, or back in front of this board, my client has prepared a cost of notice, a cost of no application, and my client has indicated that, in fact, this is costly to him, it's expensive for him, and to do that, to simply affirm, without giving him the right to supplement the statements that I made-
Move this, and that's when it comes.
...that's unlawful, Mr. Cuchero is 100% correct. If, in fact, the information's provided, and it boots out the application, because the zoning officer said, "We upheld it," it's fine, you haven't hurt anybody, but you really are giving a prejudice to my client, by not giving him the right to, in fact, simply postpone the vote, it hurts nobody.
The, the, the question is still an appeal of the zoning officer's decision.
Mr. Sonnenblick, it's the same argument you've made-
No, I, I know that, and we're going to repeat it on a, just a slightly different level. If a report is presented to your zoning officer, he has two choices. One is to continue his opinion that there's nothing for the board to do, there's no violation, or that there is a violation, that's one way or the other, at which point, this board is going to have, and, and this board could then still determine that it wants to go after whatever the testimony is, and go to the house and listen to the noise.
The submission of the report to Mr. Howard is not part of our process, that's being done for whatever purposes Mr. Howard would like to do with it. It's not part of our process as to, you know, reviewing his, his action here.
So, in other words, what you're suggesting is that there's going to be a, I withdraw that, you'll have a continuance, and then we're going to have a big discussion with, whatever Mr. Gemma produces, what we have on the other side, and we're going to have a nice scientific discussion about what is the violation. Thank you.
Well, if, if that's what the board decides to do.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If we're going to carry this, maybe we just request that they submit the information 10 days prior to, whenever the hearing is?
They said they were going to-
Okay, they'll do that, okay.
We'll try to do this, we're trying to even go quicker than that.
Okay.
It's everybody here, so they have a chance to look at it.
See, our professionals said the board would need it 10 days, but I feel that as soon as you can get it to Mr. Howard, with the better, even before the 10 days.
Mr. Hanson, we understand that everyone's touching this, including ours-
Right.
The board, Mr. Sonnenblick's, as soon as we get it, they'll get it.
Because if there is a violation, then Mr. How, Mr. Howard will move forward in that, that issue, and it wouldn't even affect the board at that time.
We understand, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So, we'll carry on the record, I assume no further notice is needed for July 10th.
Well, I just, let's make the, the formal announcement.
I got to find my, I got to find my agenda, hang on. I have no idea where it went.
Okay, so the application of Mark Parisi, BA 17-05, be carried to the board's July 10th, 2017 meeting, 7:30 here in the main meeting room, there'll be no further notice to property owners.